Good morning and welcome to the June 30th special hearing of the Planning Commission meeting for the County of Santa Barbara. Would you please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge my allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on the nation under God, in this world where liberty and justice are all.
And Ms. Rodriguez, would you please give us a TV coverage announcement?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The special hearing of June 30th, 2010 will be televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV Channel 20 at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, Santa Inez Valley, Santa Maria, and Orchid areas. The broadcast of this special hearing will be on Friday, July 2nd at 5:00 p.m. and on Sunday, July 4th at 9:00 a.m. on CSB-TV Channel 20. And now for the roll call. Commissioner Brooks?
Here.
Commissioner Cooney?
Here.
Commissioner Valencia?
Here.
Commissioner Blau?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here. Our next item is public comment, and this is the time set aside to allow public testimony on items not on today's special hearing agenda. Is there anybody who in the audience who would like to speak at public comment? Commissioner Brooks, do we have any slips? No speaker slips? No. Okay. Then we'll move right into our regular agenda and our consent agenda items. And we look like we have three. And I'm going to separate these since Commissioner Blau will be recusing himself for the third item and for also for the conceptual review item. So consent agenda items one and two. Ms. Van Mullen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the first, well, both, all three consent items, I'm going to ask that you pull them from the consent calendar and do them standard. So we need to have them right into the record. On the first one, I just have some changes I want to go over with the motion and the findings. And then the second two, I just request that you trail them. So I want to take a look at one thing before your commission takes action.
Okay. Do you want to trail them to the end of the meeting?
That would be fine.
Okay, fine. Then what I'd like to do is have Ms. Rodriguez, if she would, please read this C1 item into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is the hearing and the request of Gail and Eugene Zanin owners for to consider the following. A09AGP4 Zanin Agriculture Preserve Contract Number One, application filed on September 29th, 2009. B09AGP25 Zanin Agriculture Preserve Contract Number Two, application filed on September 29th, 2009. C09RZN11, application filed on September 29th, 2009. And to determine that the project is exempt pursuant to Sections 15317 and 15061B3 of the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
And Commissioner Blau?
I'd just like to make a motion that we approve that.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Sorry, I'm sorry, we have public comment.
Public comment.
Excuse me. Do we have any public comment? We have nothing. So...
And I also have, this is the one I have some changes on.
Okay, so...
So actually, what I'm recommending to your commission is that rather than taking action on the ag preserve contracts and the rezone, we just need you to make a recommendation on the rezone to the board. And the board will actually take action on the ag preserve contracts. So what I'm recommending is that the motion be revised, that you recommend the Board of Supervisors make the findings on the rezone as specified in Attachment A and revise Attachment A just as to the findings for the rezone. And that you recommend the Board of Supervisors approve the exemption pursuant to Section 15061B3 and delete the reference to 15317. And then Part Three is recommend the Board of Supervisors adopt the rezone, rezoning the property from U to Ag to 100, and adopt the ordinance zoning map as referenced in the staff recommendation, and delete Section C as it has to do with the ag preserve contracts.
Okay.
So moved.
And a revised second. Okay. We have no public comment on this. So any discussion? No discussion. So all those in favor of the motion, of the revised motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're going to trail items C2 and C3 to the end of the meeting. And...
Just a comment. If you're doing that, you're asking for one of the applicants to be here now and to be here at the end. Is there any way you could move C3 up, not to the end of the meeting, but perhaps after the conceptual type review?
Thank you, okay.
Comment from South County?
Thank you. I see you, Mr. Havlock.
My understanding, did you want me to come back at the end of the day or...
No, we're trying to sort that out right now. So just stand by, Ms. Van Mullen.
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'll see if I can get it done by the end of the conceptual review.
Okay.
Great, thank you. With that, I'm going to leave you then.
Okay. I just wanted, Mr. Havlock, who's down in South County, did you hear what? We're going to trail the item, C3, to the, after our conceptual review.
Ah, okay. But C2, we're still going to move forward on with, during conceptual?
No. We're going to trail both of them until after the conceptual review. So if you don't mind standing by for that. We're going to, we're going to hear that one right at the, that's next on our agenda. Okay? All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to our conceptual review item. Ms. Rodriguez, would you please read that item into the record?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is the hearing on the request by Frances Romero of Urban Planning Concepts for Pat Polagani, owner for conceptual review by the County Planning Commission of the following. A09DVP29, application filed August 31st, 2009. B09CUP38, application filed August 31st, 2009. C09TPM4, application filed August 31st, 2009. D10OSP2, application filed April 28th, 2010.
Thank you. And ex parte and site visit disclosures, please. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Gibran. I visited the site yesterday with Ms. Romero and the applicant.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney?
Madam Chair, I drove by the site this morning. I have driven by the site many times going to other site visits, not realizing it was a separate parcel, but it was worthwhile to see.
Okay, great. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you. I visited the site on two occasions, and I had a phone call from Ms. Romero requesting that I visit the site with her, but I was already at the site. And I also wanted to note that there was a gentleman there who is apparently not associated with the site, who has been cleaning that site with a hoe and a rake and making very neat little piles and keeping that site clean. So we certainly appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. And I too got a phone call from Ms. Romero and visited the site this morning. Thank you. We'll move on. Ms. Gerber is our planner, and if you'd like to do the presentation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this presentation is to assist you in your conceptual review of a proposed shopping center on Orchid Key Site Four, which would be called Orchid Hills Plaza. In this slide, you can see the project area at the southwest corner of Clark Avenue and Stillwell Road. Here's Stillwell. And its relationships to, relationship to Orchid Key Site One and Key Site Two. Should be noted that you may recall Key Site One has an approved application for Orchid Marketplace, which we'll talk about a little later. And Planning and Development has not received an application for development on Key Site Two to date. This is a five-part project, and the 65402 government code that you'll be hearing later will facilitate the applicant's acquisition of about 16,931 square feet, approximately .39 acres, from the county, increasing the size of the parcel that you see here outlined in pink to about 1.44 acres gross, 1.39 acres net. The second part of the project is a tentative parcel map to split the resulting 1.44 acre parcel into three parcels of .375, .484, and .583 acres. The third element of the project is a development plan to construct a shopping center consisting of three single-story commercial buildings, including a drive-thru. One building is proposed on each new lot for a total development of approximately 12,938 square feet. And that will be what we'll be looking at today. The fourth part is a conditional use permit for the drive-thru that's proposed. And the fifth is an overall sign plan for the shopping center, an application for which is required by the LUDC to be submitted at the same time as a development plan application. I want to give you a little bit of history about Key Site Four before we begin. So in the initiation stage of the Orchid Community Plan EIR, this 16-acre area was considered to be Key Site Four. However, subsequently, the Cimarron Estates 35-unit development to the west that says not a part of Key Site Four was built, as well as a retention basin there on the right, to serve the Key Site as a whole. I want to point out the areas here left behind by the rerouting of Clark Avenue where I'm pointing, and the rerouting of Stillwell, which happened prior to the development of Cimarron Estates. And those would be the areas that are proposed to be acquired by the applicant in the government code that you'll see later. What was left behind here in the upper right-hand corner is the Key Site Four that was ultimately analyzed in the OCP EIR. And I want to note that the eucalyptus trees that you see here and here, well, I think these yukes are there, but these were removed by a prior site owner. And that becomes important because there are some Key Site Four policies that apply to those trees, but they won't actually apply to this key site as they're no longer there. I want to note also, in the history portion of this, that the OCP EIR analyzed a build-out of about 42,258 square feet of commercial development on this little remnant portion of the key site. And that is actually what's being proposed now at about 13,000 square feet, is about one-third of what is, what was analyzed. So what was, what is currently being proposed is about a third of what was analyzed in the OCP EIR. Again, this slide shows Cimarron Estates, Key Site Four, the retention basin, Key Site One up here, Key Site Two down here. And I want to note that Key Sites One, Two, and Three are all designated C2, which is retail commercial, the intent of which is to serve the neighboring communities, as opposed to, for instance, highway commercial, which would be more oriented towards the highway businesses that you would get off the highway to visit, or C3, which would be more heavy industry warehouses and wholesale and that sort of thing. So all three of these key sites are designated C2. And you can see to the south and east, there's a mobile home park. To the north, there is residential development. And also to the west. I want to point out the fire station, which is right here, Tiffany Park. And drainage for this project, water, want to mention that the applicant has purchased two acre feet of water for the project from the city of Santa Maria. And drainage would obviously be handled by this retention basin. And the applicant has done a drainage study that shows that the basin would have enough capacity to serve the proposed development, and also confirms that this basin was built to accommodate the capacity from not just Cimarron Estates, but this remnant portion of Key Site Four as well. The project would propose to connect to this basin through a new storm drain network. Taking a closer look, here's our original part of the key site and the portions that would hopefully be added by the government code. I'm going to turn now to the actual site development. And I want to note that I'll be addressing pertinent environmental and policy issues as we proceed, as the appropriate slides come up. So here's our site outlined in red, and the three parcels that would be the result of the lot split. These green areas are from the bottom to the top, a 35-foot wide landscaped buffer along Clark Avenue that is required by the Key Site Four development standards. And also here in Clark Avenue, there's a landscaped median that is as wide as we can possibly make it to accommodate shade trees from 35 to 50 feet tall and other landscaping, also required by the Key Site Four development standards. The total proposed development as in these three buildings, which would be single-story, is 12,938 square feet. There'd be a building of 4,510 square feet, one of 4,729 square feet, and one of 3,636 square feet. And this building here in the upper right-hand corner, Building C, would be the drive-thru. And we'll talk about that in a little more detail later. The Key Site Four Development Standards also specify right-in, right-out access up here at the top right-hand corner from Clark Avenue. And here you can see a turn lane, a turn pocket. And then over on the west on Stillwell, the applicant has developed a two-way turn lane, which was a little bit of a challenge because there's also a bike path that goes through here. But we were able to get one in. And this median and the two-way turn lane, the turn pocket on Clark, were all developed by the applicant in very close consultation with Public Works Traffic. And I didn't see him earlier, but I think Will Robertson is going to be available, hopefully. He might be behind me to answer any questions you might have. Again, this is just a closer look at the landscaped median and 35-foot buffer, and the access at Stillwell, which is a four-way access, and at Clark, which again is right-in, right-out with a turn pocket. It's probably a good idea to note again here that the EIR did analyze the impact of up to 4,200, 259 square feet of commercial development on this parcel at about 1,300 square feet. Again, it's less than a third of what was analyzed. And as a result, traffic impacts are expected to be less insignificant. However, as part of the environmental review process, Public Works Traffic will be working with us and providing estimates for average daily trips and peak hour trips on this site. So this slide shows access, interior circulation, parking, and lighting. Here is the drive-thru, which could be accessed from any of the three entrances, the one on Ashbrook, Clark, or Stillwell. As you can see, you would be coming in, right turn from Clark, and making another right here to the stacking corridor. I think this is probably the order window, and this would be the pickup window. And the occupant of this building is currently undetermined. With regard to the drive-thru, the APCD, in my last conversation with them, did not expect that the emissions would exceed either normal air quality thresholds or greenhouse gas emission thresholds. However, a complete analysis would be performed during the environmental review process. This project is required to have 33 parking spaces for the square footage and uses proposed. The applicant has provided 64 spaces, consisting of 55 regulars, six handicap, and three van spaces. There are also three loading spaces and six bicycle spaces provided. I want to note at this point that the neighbors have expressed concerns about noise that could be generated from a drive-thru that would be open 24 hours a day, which is not actually proposed, but they do have these concerns, as well as increased congestion from traffic at the Clark-Stillwell intersection and along Stillwell. This slide shows the pedestrian access. The darker areas would be sidewalks and accessways. And this slide shows the landscaping and general layout. Actually, this area is going to be a little larger than on this slide, but otherwise it's fairly accurate. Note the little seating areas. And also, this is a good picture to show where the parking and entrance and exits are. The project has gone to the Board of Architectural Review for conceptual review. And you've seen the landscape plans. I'm just going to go through some elevations for you now. Again, these are all single-story buildings. Now, as we mentioned before, the Key Site Four Development Standard requires that this key site's development is aesthetically consistent with that of Key Site Two and Key Site One. So since we have an application that's been approved for Key Site One, we made the BAR aware of that during their review. And so that you can see what Key Site One looks like, or will look like someday, I've included a couple of slides to show you here. Some of this development in Key Site One is multiple-storied, but that would not be the case with Key Site Four. This is a really huge development compared to Key Site Four. I want to talk a little bit about the permitting process. Of course, the 65402 that hopefully we'll hear later, design review, environmental review, and then the tentative parcel map, development plan, conditional use permit, and overall sign plan. Coming back to environmental review, it's worth mentioning that because this site was analyzed in the EIR for a larger build-out than is currently proposed, we anticipate the same or fewer impacts than originally analyzed. However, and we would normally prepare an EIR addendum for that, which would not be publicly circulated. However, the new SEQA requirements for the analysis of greenhouse gas emissions were not in place at the time the EIR was prepared. So we will be preparing a supplemental EIR, which would focus on new issues or topics not covered by the OCP EIR. And that would be publicly circulated before the decision-maker hearing for this project. And to summarize, I want to emphasize that when I say consistent here, these aren't actual findings that we're making, but this is a very preliminary look at the project as we've developed it during the completeness process for the application. And we've developed it to be consistent with the C2 zoning and commercial land use envisioned by the OCP, to be consistent with the LUDC, the ordinance, and the EIR goals, policies, and development standards, the OCP, and particularly the Key Site Four Development Standards, including compatible architecture with Key Sites One and Two, the right-in, right-out at Clark, the landscape median and buffer, and the acquisition of the Clark right-of-way, which I don't know if I mentioned, but was actually proposed in the OCP Key Site Four policies. The county was directed to consider relinquishment of that right-of-way to Key Site Four. And that concludes my presentation, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is this the same architect that did Key Site One?
You know, I don't know. Let's ask the applicant.
No? Because they're similar-type buildings? Okay, fine. They're from the same area, similar-type buildings. Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Mr. Robertson has arrived. I wondered, did he have any comments on the...
I'll just wait for...
Okay, fine, for questions. All right. So questions from the commissioners? No, questions from the commissioners. All right. Then we'll go to the applicant, Ms. Tamura.
Thank you very much. My name's Lori Tamura with Urban Planning Concepts. We have our team here. Frances Romero from my office. Pat Palangi is one of the landowners for the project. Jerry Schmidt is on vacation, but passionately waiting to hear the results of this meeting. And we also have the architect, Mike Peachy, is here with the project. The presentation that Joyce provided to this Planning Commission was very thorough. We've worked very hard, not only with the planning staff, transportation, but also with the BAR to address the many issues that came up throughout the analysis of the community plan, as well as meeting the zoning ordinance designations. What I would like to do is, if you could put the aerial photograph, please. The important elements of the project, as noted by Joyce, talk about how this space, whoops, how this small piece interrelates with everything else that's happening around the project. So some of the elements that were part of her presentation include working with the adjacent landowner. So when you see that access point coming in with the right turn in, right turn out, it also includes the ability for this landowner to take advantage of that access point, so that we're not talking about adding another access point along Clark Avenue, because with the relationship of Key Site One to Key Site Two, there will be another signalized intersection over here. So we worked with Mr. Bartleson and his team to work on a joint access point at that location. We also did not affect the extension of Ashbrook into the site, and again, trying to design with what is all existing on the properties and the surrounding areas. One of the strongest points that we made throughout the design was keeping this a one-story element. The concern was keeping this compatible with the surrounding residential area, making sure that we brought in that agrarian Orchid style with the metal-seamed roofs and different materials, kind of reminiscent of Albertson Shopping Center or Evergreen Shopping Center, and carrying that through. We spent a lot of time with BAR with trying to create, and if you could throw up the site plan for me now, with the landscaping. One of the things that we really focused in on was how to create space that people would be willing to walk... would be willing to walk to and experience, and of course, address the wind that is familiar with those that live here in Orchid. So we created a nice courtyard right in this area to allow for protection from the wind. We do have a courtyard out front, because in the early mornings, it's a nice spot to see the sunrise and, you know, experience what's happening in the community. We also have some courtyards out in this area, and again, a nice location right here, and again, right in this area. So we tried to take advantage of caddling the buildings, so that you could create these little outdoor experiences, and again, interconnecting walkways and making sure that this becomes a very comfortable place for the community to experience. We don't really see this as a shopping center. This is a little neighborhood center, and it's a destination for those people that live in the immediate area to come and do their daily needs, rather than going to Clark and Bradley. So rather than going through the full presentation, we appreciate staff's analysis. We believe we are consistent with all of the standards that have been outlined, and we do believe a drive-thru is appropriate for this location. We never said it was a 24-hour drive-thru location, so I hope that can alleviate some of the concerns that were relayed to you in letters. But a drive-thru at this location would be very appropriate, and as people are leaving to hit the road going down to Santa Barbara, they can get their cup of coffee, they can come in as they're coming back into Orchid and pick up their food before they go home. So we are hopeful that the drive-thru will continue through this process. We are available to answer any questions that you may have. Again, we know this is conceptual review, so we're here to listen to what the planning commission and the community have to say, and we are available for any questions that might come up through the process.
Thank you, Lori. Does any commissioner have questions for Mr. Tamura? No. None? Okay. I have a question for our planner, and that has to do with this area, which is in the setback. You indicated that there's a required of a 35-foot setback?
That's correct.
So is it permissible, or is that part of the discretionary process of this little, I guess it's a little patio area?
Madam Chair, commissioners, we did consider that carefully. It was challenging to get that 35-foot median in place and still have the applicant get the space they needed to do what they wanted to do. Because the intent of the buffer is to be a buffer from Clark, we felt that having the vegetation on the Clark side and continuing some of around into the little patio area was appropriate and did constitute a buffer of the nature that was envisioned by the community plan.
Okay. Thank you. There being no other questions from commissioners, I'll turn to public comment. Okay. Thank you. Our first speaker is Ms. Tamura. I already have...oh, you're one. Okay. Ms. Tunila.
My head is a little bit...
Yes, please, if you go to the microphone. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm here representing mainly my own personal family as residents of Simran Estates, but also, we have met informally with many neighbors and other people in the nearby surroundings. So I'm not an expert on this kind of presentation. I just, and this is the first time before a planning commission ever, but I feel extremely strongly on one particular aspect of this, as do the majority of my neighbors, and that is a drive-thru restaurant. We feel it is highly inconsistent with what we envision as the cultural flavor of our neighborhood, and was mentioned already quite eloquently by the developers. There is a plentiful supply of fast-food restaurants and quick restaurants just a short distance away at Clark and Bradley, where the intersection has plenty of opportunity for traffic. And I named in my note here that I hope you all received, a list of many of those facilities that are already successfully in operation. There does not seem to be a traffic flow issue. My address is on Ashbrook Lane, which is directly across from one of the accesses stated here. We already have a lot of problems with that particular mini-intersection. It started out without a stop sign there. Luckily, one of our former neighbors worked really hard to get a stop sign there. However, the CHP or sheriff frequently park there, because there is a tendency of people that are in a hurry on their way wherever, northbound on Clark, to totally run that red light. If you drive down Stillwell and head north, you will see already that the beautiful eucalyptus tree that's part of the flavor of the neighborhood, right in front of the Mobile Home Park there, is an obstruction, but it was there before the road continuation, I believe. The retention basin, which has served our little neighborhood of 30-some homes for 13 years, is attractive. It is by the plan of the county that we have it there, but it creates a turn in the road there, which again, is an obstruction to people driving or walking on Stillwell at the time. It appears, according to the report, that that retention basin would be adequate for any runoff from this development. However, when we have had heavy rains, we have had issues already, just with the runoff from our neighborhood, the retention level of the water has been near the top already. And that does not address any chemicals coming off of parking that, from cars, that have been in that particular site. So we acknowledge that that development is inevitable, and we look forward to a pleasant one. We appreciate that it's a one-story structure. We appreciate that foliage is there. I'm noticing that there is a huge strip of landscaping that will be on Clark. However, if you look at this plan, a single stand of trees there on Stillwell is not going to provide a whole lot of protection from lighting, noise, and other things that will come up from this development. And I'm kind of skipping around in my presentation, because some of it's been addressed. With a drive-thru restaurant, even though we have lots of county health ordinances, along with anything to do with food, we're aware of the problems involving insects, rodents, and other stray animals in the area. Also, fast-food restaurants, as we can see, if we travel up to our neighborhood McDonald's and Orchid Burger, and all those other facilities at Albertson's, they are a magnet to junior high children, especially skateboarders that want to find a perfect area of cement, and this has been an issue. At some point, Orchid as a community is going to need to address places for our youth to hang out. So this also, with providing a fast-food restaurant, it's an automatic magnet for youth that do not have other facilities. So we are very, very concerned about this. And we're also aware that once there's a change of use that goes in from what the past plan did not state, a fast-food restaurant, that once that change occurs, we lose the ability to have a lot of input of exactly what is going to occur. Automatically, we're also aware that our property values, which have already suffered, like most peoples in this economy, are going to drop intensively. If you drive through our neighborhood, it is a single loop, Ashbrook and around. There is no access at the other end, either on foot or with traffic patterns with vehicles. Especially in the last four or five years, the families that moved into our neighborhood are going to be wonderful for the Orchid School District, because we've got lots of young children. They're out there riding their bikes. They're being kids, they're playing. We've had a number of incidents already with fast drivers that get down to the end of that loop, realize there's no exit, and they come whipping around already. So if we put Ashbrook in direct line for all the exit, especially for the fast-food patrons, we are asking for a lot of safety issues. Also, with a drive-thru restaurant, we're going to invite lots of people. We want to invite people at the gateway to our community, and Mr. Simpson there with the greeter, the greeter has been so wonderful as he works that field. However, when we're traveling the 101, there are tons and tons of people on the 101, and we don't ask ID before they pull into our fast-food restaurant. So we also are going to be faced with just a collage. Yes, we hope that they're mainly Orchid residents, but the reality is, we're going to have all kinds of transients. We don't know, we haven't checked Megan's List before they go into...
Can we ask you to sum up, please?
Okay. So in summary, we strongly say yes to development, but we strongly urge you to not accept a fast-food restaurant in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Our next speaker is Edward San Jose.
My name is Edward San Jose, and I'm also a neighbor in Simran Estates, live on Ashbrook, which is the main entrance into Simran. I just want to voice my opposition and concern regarding the fast-food restaurant as well. My probably biggest concern is when you, although there is going to be a way to get into this facility off of Clark, if you're going, I guess, east on Clark, a lot of people are going to be coming through Stillwell, and then also where Ashbrook is being looked at to be extended. And my concern there is health and safety. All the neighborhoods that have been built behind Simran, Jensen's Crossing, Mesa Verde, and the other development that is there, that's the only exit we have. And my concern is if there was a fire or some sort of major problem, and when the neighbors needed to get out of there, we're going to have a major traffic jam, and, you know, who knows what that could cause. So that's my biggest concern. I'm also concerned about, you know, they mentioned that this is designed for the neighborhood. To me, this is designed more for commuters that are coming, you know, driving down the 101. And those people that are going to come off of the 101 and come down Clark, they're going to turn onto Stillwell and not make a U-turn and go back on Clark. And so we're going to draw a lot of people from out of the area into our neighborhood. The reason my family bought there was because, you know, we thought it was aesthetically beautiful, quiet neighborhood, and I think that's going to change dramatically if we bring in a fast-food restaurant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Gard. Joyce, would you put up the site plan, please? Perhaps the one...that's good. Thank you.
Hi there. My family and I own a house on Heatherwood Lane, which is in Simran Estates, and these first two speakers were so eloquent, I'm going to just keep mine very brief. Regarding the fast-food drive-thru, we have, within two miles of this, we have three or four drive-thrus headed towards Orchid. Three or four miles north of there, we have a little strip of drive-thru restaurants in Santa Maria. So I'm really not sure if there's a demand for a fast-food restaurant at this site, especially since it is a gateway site. You know, we have issues dealing with traffic and other areas, too, so these guys already As far as regional shopping centers go, I don't think that this key site was set up for regional shopping. I think the regional centers are the bigger centers, like Evergreen, and, you know, for sure, some of the ones in Santa Maria. But I'm a real estate appraiser, and I've just, over the last few years, I've noticed Heather, a tremendous amount of vacancies for this kind of properties in Santa Maria and in Orchid. So I'm not really sure that there's a big demand for this right now. Obviously, the developer must think so. If he is indeed planning on developing, he must have these, you know, these numbers all worked out, but I'm not sure if there really is. And also the traffic issues, which everybody knows about and everybody will be speaking to. Let me read from the community plan. I read it last night. It's 500 pages long. Everybody read it? It's a pretty impressive piece of literature. Page three, "Future growth and development shall be directed so as to create neighborhood centers and to develop neighborhood identities." A fast-food restaurant is not really a neighborhood identity or a neighborhood center, and like the speaker's performance said, they'd be attracting mostly the highway crowd coming off the highway. So we really, again, this goes to demand. We really, really don't need it. This thing we got today, CR1, page 3.0, talks about trying to improve the balance between jobs and housing. As many of you know, retail commercial workers cannot afford to buy houses here, so I'm not really sure how this will be improving that balance.
Would you like to sum up your, I've got 30 seconds left.
Okay. I'm requesting a denial of the conditional use permit. It's inconsistent with the Orchid Community Plan regarding neighborhood identity. It's incompatible with the surrounding area. Evergreen Center and the shopping centers mentioned before have much better traffic flow, and they're not, you know, they're not, cars aren't running over kids on bikes next to a subdivision. And it's detrimental to the health and safety of the people due to the excess traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to remind those in the audience that this is a conceptual review only. We're not making any decision on the project. It's just for the commission to provide feedback to the applicant on how the commission feels about the project, and the applicant will then go back and revise, change, or submit, depending upon what their preferences are based upon our comments. So what you'll hear from us is just our comments, and there will be no decision on the project today. Ms., our next speaker is Pamela McCall. McCall?
Good morning. I too live in the Simran Homeowners Association. I was here previously with the Architectural Review Committee. We all knew that this was going to be a commercial development at some point, and I would like to thank the developers for the time they've taken to try to incorporate it with Key Site One, which at some point will go in, and at some point with Key Site Two. My neighbors and I have a concern primarily because, if you read the Orchid Plan, Key Site Four is either supposed to be a small neighborhood development or incorporated with Key Site Two, and the reason for that is Key Site One and Key Site Two, once they're built, will have to put in the additional traffic access that allows for right turn-in, right turn-out, as well as left turn-in, left turn-out from Clark. The traffic here is a concern, because Stillwell is going to be the primary access point for anyone. Almost anyone, when you're traveling on this, you've all been to the site, as you know. Unless you're heading directly from Orchid and going onto the freeway, you're going to have to make a left-hand turn at some point to get back onto Clark to head home. Obviously, a drive-thru restaurant, anything that's going to increase traffic counts where people are never getting out of their car, is going to increase that traffic. One of the questions I have today, as I'm looking at the site and landscaping layout again, is I see these interlocking walkways, but the way that I see that the site is formed in terms of how the drive-thru traffic comes in and out, is it appears that people trying to get to any of the driveway cutouts, the traffics, and have to come over the interlocking walkway. So I'm not seeing how it's as pedestrian-friendly as perhaps the developer hopes it will be when you've got all of this traffic that'd be running over the interlocking walkways to get to any of the parks that it shows. Another question that I have is, in terms of the retention basin, we do have a water retention basin. It does get quite full. I'm not sure how that will be impacted by the development once you put in asphalt versus what we have now, which is just basically a dirt patch from the gentleman who loves to weed, and if this project goes over, I'm hoping he'll come to my backyard and start on mine, because there's a lot of work I could use. But one of the questions that I have is, A, we have that retention basin. I don't know how it's monitored in terms of how full it gets, and two, there really isn't, there's an agreement in place that they get to use it through an easement, but there is nothing in place at this point that dictates how much they pay to the association to help us recover the costs of maintaining that water retention basin. And I know that there is, excuse me, I'm recovering from a cold, there is a proposal to divide this into three separate lots. And so the other question I have becomes, how does the association go about making sure that we get adequate funding to retain the water basin that will function and serve this development, when currently there's been no effort made to help us work that process through? And my fear is if we divide that into three separate lots with three more owners, it'll be harder for the association to maintain that water retention basin and get the funding to do so. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Jeremy Nguyen?
I'm Jeremy Nguyen. I live in the Simran Estates on Heatherwood. In April of this year, my wife, myself, and our two small boys just moved into Simran Estates. What really brought us to this area was the quietness, the remoteness of Simran. You know, it's a very peaceful neighborhood that we moved into, and actually, right next door to us is our small homeowner association-owned park. My boys love to play there. For me, a fast-food restaurant moving in within this area produces some problems for me. Fast-food restaurants, first of all, there's increased crime that is associated with them. By design, fast-food restaurants are typically located off of freeways, which this one will be, and major corridors to convenience patrons. Unfortunately, this is an attractive feature to perpetrators, as the close proximity to the freeways in multiple directions makes for an easy escape route. The proposed fast-food restaurant will be located near Clark and the 101. And it doesn't take, doesn't take a genius to put in that someone's going to be getting their fast food, looking for someplace to visit and eat it. So they've provided some places here, sure, but it doesn't take much to realize that 100 yards from the Ashbrook stop sign here is our privately-owned park that... yards from the Ashbrook stop sign here is our privately-owned park that is going to be very attractive for certain people. So now that starts bringing the crime into, or more patrons into our closed, close-knit environment. This, this is definitely not something that I would have wanted when I bought my home. Granted, we knew something was going to go in this area. I had no idea a fast food restaurant with the main access being on Stillwell and Ashbrook, that was not something that was, that I was known of. So ultimately, my, my, my problem is with the, the traffic that's going to come in, the people that could be easily frequenting our neighborhood and our park, and the fact that, you know, we're trying to develop a neighborhood development here. Well, fast food restaurants inevitably are going to produce smells, produce chemicals. You know, you walk outside, who wants to smell hash browns every morning when they step out their front door? I really don't. That's not a neighborhood environment to me. So, you know, I'm okay with the, with the rest of the development, you know, with some retail stores that my wife, myself, my kids can frequent, that's great. But a fast food restaurant, I don't think lends itself to a neighborhood development here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sergio Camacho. Camacho.
I'm Sergio Camacho. I've been in the neighborhood. I bought there about three years ago. My wife and I have since started raising a family there along, we've, we've noticed since the, the decline in the housing market, there've been other young families like us that have been attracted to the neighborhood. I've got my two small children right there. My main problem with the fast food restaurant going in is the traffic and the transience that it'll bring with it. The closest school that we have to our neighborhood is Dunlap School. It's about a mile away. The other school that we are zoned for is Pine Grove School. The only way that we can get there is from Ashbrook, or I'm sorry, from Stillwell, if I could come over to the screen?
No, once you, do we not have a pointer for them at the podium? Yeah, please use that, thank you.
Well, I'm not familiar with pointers, so anyway.
Okay.
Stillwell, there's Stillwell Road right there, and then if you make a left, it'll be Clark, right? And then, two miles down the road, you have to go through another four-way intersection, which is, which is Bradley, which is not the question here. The question is, Clark, coming, coming westbound on Clark, people, the, the plan, the people that are planning this are asking people to make a U-turn and make an access into the drive-through restaurant via Clark, which they won't do because it's easier to make a left-hand turn onto Stillwell, right into the development, and go to the back of the, the drive-through restaurant. My main problem is this, that in the morning, when we get our kids to school, because we will have to drive them there, they will not be able to walk alone because it's going to be such a heavy traffic in that four-way intersection, there's going to be, it's going to be a mess. Also, if you look at the police reports recently, in the past two and a half years, there's, there's been a lot of transient crime in our neighborhood. Myself, as well as a few of my neighbors, have reported on it. There are people that like to pull off of the freeway, and they like to nap in our neighborhood because it's so quiet and so out of the way. It's a nice hidden spot, it's a secret spot, and we like it that way. We don't want people coming to our park to sleep. We don't want people coming to our park to eat their hamburgers while my kids play in the front yard and try to enjoy their neighborhood. This is a family neighborhood, we don't want it to be a transient neighborhood. Please keep the fast food restaurants down in Santa Maria or farther on Clark, away from the other quiet neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. David Stareta.
My name is David Stareta. I live on Solomon View, we're a recent homebuyer in the area, and I oppose any type of QSRs. We were raised on the Central Coast and recently relocated from LA, where I spent a lot of time working in advertising and media, and worked a lot on Jack in the Box. And as part of that, we analyzed the consumers extensively who went to fast food restaurants.
Excuse me, would you please address the commission? Thank you.
Okay. And so, who goes to fast food restaurants? Say target with their advertising, as you know, heavy users, which are young men primarily. We're not going to even look at the, the traffic, but just who's the, who's the user of the product? Young men, and young men are what, more apt to commit violent crimes, as somebody here has said. Their driving records are horrible if you compare it to the general population. So what we can count on with this project going in, with any kind of QSR, quick-serve restaurant, it could be fast food, it could be Starbucks, it could be anything of that nature, something fast, is going to increase the crime, increase the traffic, increase the traffic accidents. And this is not just known to anybody in advertising and media, but also somebody who's a, just simply goes into the restaurant and takes a look at who composes the consumer group that goes in there. Second thing out of three that I wanted to bring up is the aesthetic of Santa Maria, okay? If you drive up north, which I've done hundreds of times, you see Clark, which is nice. You see Betaravia, you got a big old Walmart sticking right off the freeway. You go to Stoll, you got Carl's Jr. and In-N-Out and Red Lobster. You go to Main, you see Starbucks and IHOP. The people who visit the Central Coast obviously are going to remember Santa Maria as the fast food place. Fast food is junky. It's junky food. Is that what we want our community to be? Is a place of, of fast food junk when people walk, drive into the Central Coast, the beautiful Central Coast? You go into Roy Grandy, what's off of Traffic Way? Grand Avenue. They even redid Oak Park so you didn't have to jump in or ride into a fast food Carl's Jr. that was there. You go into San Luis, okay, you got Madonna, but then you have Marsh. These are nice freeway places, the Central Coast in these areas is nice. We add fast food, it becomes less so. And I guess my final question is, as you said, address the, the board, is if this was your area, if you lived in this community, would you want a fast food place, a quick-serve restaurant of any kind going into your backyard? For your children? For your grandchildren? Running around and playing around, would you invite this into, into their area? Well, please consider that when you make your decision on this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers? If, if so, please give Commissioner Brooks your speaker slip. Thank you. And Ms. Deborah Khan.
Actually, the other speakers have pretty much said what I had intended to say, but I did want to add a couple of points in terms of the safety issues. I would ask that you please check the records on the accidents that have already occurred on Clark and Stillwell. I live in, my backyard butts up against that, and we have a two-story house, and we always hear the accidents first, and then if we happen to be upstairs, we see them. One of the accidents took out three or four trees on the back of our fence that lines our housing development. One actually took out the streetlight on the corner there. There was one involved with, a pretty bad one, that involved the fire truck that was coming out. When you come up Clark Road, you don't, it, it's, it's, it's a difficult intersection. And so one of my big concerns is that with a fast food restaurant, we're going to have a lot more traffic accidents in that area. And I'm really concerned about the senior citizens that are in that mobile home park. We've helped a number of them home with their groceries. The bus stop is across the street on Still, across, it's on the north side of, it's on Stillwell, on the north side of Clark Avenue. So the senior citizens need to cross that intersection there, where everybody's been talking about all the U-turns. Many of them are very ambulatory, but there's a lot of them that are very, that are feeble, they don't even get across the light before the light changes, and some ride their little scooters and push their little carts along. So I really wanted to bring that safety issue to your attention and ask that you look into that more. And then also the increased noise. I was delighted, I've lived in Simron Estates on Heatherwood for 11 years now, I was delighted when they put the light in there because of safety. But what that also did was the idling vehicles there have increased the noise pollution as well as, as the fumes. And I think that even though it was mentioned that they thought there would be a little environmental impact in that regard, I do believe idling cars through a fast food restaurant would increase that noise pollution and that air pollution, which is not healthy for the senior citizens or, well, any of us in the neighbor, in those neighborhoods. So anyhow, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. I'm going to close the public comment portion and certainly.
Just closing?
Go ahead.
Thank you. We appreciate all the comments that came from the neighborhood. We did have, for the record, several letters of support for the project that were provided to the Planning Commission, and we look forward to hearing your comments and moving forward with the environmental review portion, as well as coming back to the Planning Commission near in the future. The item that's related to this is the right-of-way issue. I'm not sure if that's going to be heard as a separate item or part of this.
No, we're going to hear it, it's separate.
Okay, great, so we're obviously...
And that'll be following this.
Okay, thank you very much, so we'll be prepared for that.
All right, thank you. So now we close the public hearing, and I, I don't know, are there any commissioner questions for our planner or, because I have some questions before we go into comments. Go ahead, Ms. Brooks.
Yes, I would just like to, as Ms. Gerber, there's no light right now at Clark and Stillwell.
Yeah, there is.
There is a light.
I'll just go through it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Gerber, the question regarding the retention basin, one of our speakers mentioned that, I guess it was part of the, this, this project has an easement or has the ability to use the, the retention basin. What happens in the case, I mean, that's all a private concern, how they work together in terms of their use and maintenance and upkeep. I realize that's more project-specific, but I'm sort of, it's going to reflect, going to reflect on some of my comments.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the, for completeness, we required, excuse me, an agreement between the project, proposed project owner and Simron for use of the basin. We do not, as one speaker said, have anything in place that would facilitate the remuneration. So that would be something that would need to be worked out between the two entities, as far as I know.
So when that basin was sized, it was based upon a larger, more, a bigger footprint, more square footage?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, it, it's kind of an interesting story, actually. When the applicant had Bethel Engineering do the basin analysis, which we required as part of application completeness, there were no records that they could find that told whether or not that basin had indeed been designed for the commercial development or, as well, or just the residential development. But when they did their calculations, they found that it had indeed been designed to accommodate the runoff from impervious surface for that key site and their proposed 42,000 square foot of development.
Okay. And a question for Mr. Robertson concerning traffic, since we've heard a lot about that. And I, I wonder if you just have any general comments about traffic in that area or in terms of traffic onto Stillwell into the project, or it's turning the, the turn lane on Clark?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, yes, I have some general comments.
Okay, thank you.
Want to dispel some, some rumors that I've been hearing here. But primarily, to give the applicant credit, we have worked very hard with them on this project to come up with something that works for the design that they proposed. We talked at length about how to design Clark Avenue. Bethel Engineering and myself came up with something that was consistent with the Orchid Community Plan that prohibited left turns out onto Clark, which is mandated by the Orchid Community Plan, as well as provided an access point that was far enough east of Clark to limit the, the potential conflicts at the Stillwell-Clark intersection. They were also required to add a right turn lane in to, again, minimize the impacts of the eastbound through movements. Since this is a primary arterial for Orchid, the key is to move cars east to west. And we've made that point, actually, I've made that point the whole time I've been with the county. We need to, to preserve the flow on Clark. Stillwell was a little bit more challenging. We had long conversations on whether or not an access point along Stillwell is appropriate. Originally, the department's stance was that we were not going to allow the applicant to have a, an access point along Stillwell. Analysis was done using current traffic counts as well as projected traffic counts that were done in the Orchid Community Plan. And we determined that the geometrics could be changed along Stillwell to provide a two-by-left turn lane and then left turn pockets at both ends of Stillwell and Ashbrook, and still provide an adequate amount of service to that driveway without impacting Stillwell-Clark However, there, there is a concern, because we're just at the planning stage, the applicant does not necessarily have tenants in the buildings. And this is kind of the thorn in my side, is that, you know, we, we look at general land uses here. And Building A, Building B, you know, they're going to be general retail, probably not high generators. The fast food restaurant, or perhaps, you know, in all fairness, do, I, I don't think they've claimed it's a fast food, it could be, like one gentleman said, it could be a Starbucks, a coffee bean and tea leaf, you know, something that's not as high demand as, as a fast food restaurant. Regardless, we still don't know what that tenant is, and I'm not 100% sure if, if the other buildings are going to be designed to handle restaurants. That could be an issue because if they're highly successful restaurants, driveway counts at the intersection there along the west could be high enough to cause conflicts. However, again, we've worked with the applicant, we came up with a solution that said, we'll monitor that if there is an issue. The applicant will have a condition that says that we can limit the turns to right-in, right-out. What the neighborhood's not going to like is that it's actually going to, if that is the case, then anybody who's going down Stillwell will be using the Ashbrook access point to come into the development on the south end. Or it's probably likely that the majority of people are going to flip U-turns, so we're going to allow U-turns up at Clark-Stillwell.
Excuse me, are you through?
No, I, I wanted to address the Ashbrook-Stillwell intersection. Somebody had brought up that there is an issue there and that it's a traffic problem. And this intersection has been kind of a weird situation for us because there have been accidents there. We went, we looked, what do we need to do? We looked to put in a stop sign, which currently is in. However, the volumes are so light out of the neighborhoods that it really didn't warrant a stop sign. After extensive study, we noticed that the Simron development, when it went in, the landscaping and the walls themselves from the development, coupled with the curve of the road, created a sight distance issue. That factor alone allowed us to take this item to our Traffic Engineering Committee, and the Traffic Engineering Committee recommended that a stop sign be put in. But again, as I mentioned earlier, the low volumes actually cause a problem because drivers do not like to stop when there are no conflicts. So I, I've seen it, I, I live locally. If you come up to that intersection and there's nobody there 90% of the time, and I just throw that number out there, then of course you're not going to want to stop. You get a high number of California stops through that intersection. What, what this intersection, what this development will actually do is it'll actually create more traffic at that intersection, which will create more conflicts, which most people now will be aware, and hopefully it'll, it'll cause people to stop more frequently.
Well, what about the closeness of this entryway, exit and entryway, and this, this, it seems to me that it's, they're awfully close together.
I, I've analyzed that extensively, again, we looked to the Orchid traffic model, output from the Orchid Community Plan, as well as current counts, and, as well as counts that were done during the peak of, of the construction boom. So I, I've looked at multiple scenarios. And it appears that even though they're fairly close, the simulation runs have shown that it, it should function correctly. But again, we're going to throw that caveat out there, that if it does not work, we have the option of restricting access at that intersection. The applicant has agreed to that.
So restricting access here, or?
Correct.
How would you do that? You would close it off?
They would be required to put a, what's called a pork chop, to allow right-ins, right-outs, so the left turns would not be allowed in, heading southbound.
I see. And there's a bike lane, I think someone's... I see. And there's a bike lane? I think someone spoke to a bike lane along here?
That's correct.
And that's a Class II?
Correct. And we've had discussions, again, with the applicant's engineer and County Engineering Department, and we're willing to accept a design exception in order to minimize the lanes on Stillwell and still provide the Class II bikeway.
Okay. And my last question, I know you have a question, Commissioner Valencia, let me ask this question. There's a sidewalk proposed here, and I presume that's Ms. Gerber's. But it's interesting that a sidewalk with no, so close to a very busy street is very, unless it's 12 feet or 10 feet wide, and I'm not sure what's proposed here, is almost hazardous, it seems, if you walk along it with, next to a very busy roadway. Do you have any comments on sidewalk widths next, I don't know what's in the Orket Community Plan, if there's any thought about-
The engineering design standards require a 10-foot sidewalk. However, if you look at the rest of Clark, what the applicant has proposed is consistent with what is out there, standard five-foot monolithic sidewalks.
But what is, what is out there, Mr. Robertson, isn't acceptable for pedestrians?
And that's your discretion, from the department. A sidewalk being poured monolithically, and five foot in width is, it meets the standards.
It meets minimum standards, but it's certainly not pedestrian-friendly. Okay, Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Robertson, in this area, I noticed that Stillwell is very narrow, and, but currently, all on this side and on this side here, it's all clear so that people could actually park their cars there. So on this project here, would all this be painted red on both sides so there wouldn't be any parking? Because it is a very narrow street.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Valencia, currently, there is not enough width out there on Stillwell to provide parking, so-
But it's clear.
It is clear, and I'm not 100% sure if we have no parking signs out there. But because of the narrow widths, if somebody were to park there, it would be a traffic violation, because they would be encroaching into the travel lane. It is against the vehicle code.
So probably, whether the, it's easier than reading a sign to have the curb painted all red on both sides, isn't it? Isn't that a better safety feature?
Because of maintenance issues, we probably would not paint the curb red. However, it would be signed.
Okay, we'll discuss, we'll take care of that during the development plan. That could be a condition of approval. That'll be something that'll be discussed. This is just a conceptual-
Okay. Any other Commissioner question? Okay, if not, then, or, Ms. Gerber, do you have any closing comments before I turn it back to the Commission for individual comments? No?
I don't, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Well, then, let me do that. We turn it back to the Commission for either, for their individual comments. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since this is a fourth district item, I thought I'd just say a couple of things. First of all, when I saw the project, I thought that it would have traffic problems. That was the first thing, because I hadn't received the map. I received the map about three days after I received the project. And I saw the decelerization, decelerization, how am I pronouncing?
We got it.
All right. Decelerate lane. And then I saw that it could handle, the pocket could handle about five or six cars, so it would eliminate that. Then the setback was a little clear, and so if it's, so that you don't see just concrete, this portion here, and then this portion here, just made it more palatable for me as a conceptual motion. The project as itself could handle three times as much of square footage for development, and I'm impressed that there's only three buildings, so one-third of the development, as was indicated. The second was that the parking, you're always concerned with parking, there's never enough parking. And the project, as it says, I think called for 33 parking spaces. Well, there's 64, so that's going to help considerably. And then the accesses, which, in and out, in and out, and in and out here also. You can come in this way, and then you go through, and then you come out. The only bad portion that I saw was that when the vehicle came in here through the fast food, it had to go through the parking lot, rather than an empty lane through a parking lot that cars might be backing out. That was the only negative thing that I saw in terms of approval of a project like this. But many of these things can be worked out. But as far as conceptual, it's not approving any project, any development plan on there now. I don't see any major problem. And it looks like, as far as I'm concerned, the project could go forward.
Okay. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Brown. I pulled out my Orket Community Plan mostly last night, and I went through, went through, I was kind of curious to see, you know, what was planned for Key Site One, Key Site Two, you know, looking at all the cumulative impacts that have been already considered. And I was very impressed, you know, with what I read for Key Site Four. The two words that seemed to jump out at me, that this was to be a neighborhood, commercial, development area, to try to help with the immediate community, which certainly has grown in recent years. I guess I'm one of those Clark Avenue transients. I live in Vandenberg Village, all my access going north to the 101. I go by Clark Avenue. I am also, I'll get to that later on, though, I like fast food. And I know I go Clark Avenue because I go to Jack in the Box as I, you know, come back into the area. But I'll deal with this. I'll, when I went to the site yesterday, I was impressed with several aspects of the plan. Again, is, in terms of being community-oriented, the idea of courtyards, the landscaping is very attractive. I always looked in terms of people walking to this particular, to the amenities, hopefully, that will be there. I like the idea of the one-story buildings. You've maintained, they've worked to maintain the bike path. At first, I was kind of concerned with all the parking spaces, because, again, parking spaces equals traffic. But it is very nice that, you know, they are using some of the space, rather than for building space, you know, to have the adequate parking. That being said, as far as conceptual review, I think we've heard, you know, the major concern of the neighbors is the possibility of what I would consider a big franchise, you know, fast food, fast food restaurant, a drive-through. In speaking with the applicant yesterday, I guess, you know, there might be some other types of drive-throughs there. To me, a drive-through is a drive-through. I live in Vandenberg Village, we have no drive-throughs. I don't know if, and as a longtime resident of Vandenberg Village, I guess I'm kind of glad we have no drive-throughs. I do highway cleanup also, and we know that drive-throughs, my biggest objection to fast food-type places, is the litter. That, and even, we have no drive-throughs, and, you know, we are getting, you know, the litter that's there, and sometimes people do forget that. I'm thinking, if I lived in the neighborhood, boy, I know my kids would have liked to have had a fast food. I know every student at Cabrillo High School wanted a fast food at, in the village. Well, we never had it. It does create traffic problems going into town. However, you know, we have several, almost general store-type coffee shops out in the village. And I know that has become our community center. You know, people stop in, there's adequate parking, get your cup of coffee. I'm just wondering if something like that could be used there versus this idea of, let's get in the car, let's go through, you know, even commuters can get out of their car for a few minutes and go into something that maybe has other, you need supplies out there, I think, in Orket. You need a little general store of some kind. And again, it could, you know, it's, you know, maybe it's that kind of that AMPM concept, though, you know, but more in a kind of semi-rural idea of maybe a general store. I'm concerned about, I guess it's Ashbrook. You know, the applicant explained to me that they, if whatever this little place, Building C, is, I think it's Building C on the maps, whatever that becomes, they try to pull that as far away from the residential area. And I do appreciate that, but if the traffic is coming in down Stillwell, and then making that left into Ashbrook, that's bringing the traffic, you know, right next to the residential areas. So I heard Mr. Robinson suggest, well, they might restrict the middle entrance. I think in, maybe looking at the plans, maybe they could try to restrict the Ashbrook entrance, you know, instead, because then, again, if there is any excess traffic, you know, it would be pulling it in that direction. Just some other observations I had. I know there's the fire station across the street, and I took a little drive over there. And it's very interesting that that fire, the fire trucks have to go out into a residential street, make a very tight turn, you know, and it's, okay, you have all the development now. I know we're looking at other projects down on Clark Avenue on the other side. Maybe as some of this, you know, if this project does go in, perhaps the county fire would consider, I'd look to see if they could put a curb in there, you know, open it up from the backside. It just seems to me that's a very strange configuration for that particular fire station, to think that it goes in, into a residential area, versus, let's say, going out on Clark, where they'd have faster access. Those are my suggestions. I think, you know, the project has, you know, much potential, but I think that this Building C needs to be looked at again, and perhaps there is some type of commercial, general store, food, you know, facility that could go in there, versus, you know, the drive-in. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I think what we're doing is trying to plan a little corner of the Orket Community Plan, which really envisioned joint planning with a much larger site next door, and a larger still site across the street, across Clark. To take this site out of context and plan it is difficult, because we're not sure what is going to be planned for Key Site Two, when and if a project comes forward. But nonetheless, I think the applicant has come close to general retail uses that would accommodate that relatively small site, and has the potential to be similar to and complementary to the Key Site Two development to come, with the exception of the drive-through restaurant. If you look on the map Ms. Gerber put up originally of the, the aerial of the surrounding site, you see that Key Site Four now is tucked into a residential area, both across the street and immediately adjacent in Cimarron Estates. So we really need, I think, as a couple of residents indicated, we need to plan this site with the residential uses in mind. And that means a reduction in noise, light, light's been addressed quite extensively by the developer. However, the insistence on a drive-through restaurant has a number of evils that would make it a, as far as I'm concerned, would take the deal off the table. And that is, in addition to generating more traffic, and I understand why commercial centers like drive-throughs, because we in our modern society either are in our homes or in our cars, and we don't like to get out and walk the 10 feet to the entrance of a restaurant, a store, or anything else. If we had drive-through grocery markets, I'm sure they'd be very popular. But given that that's an option being put forth here, I think we need to, and many of these comments, I might say, I made at the same time we reviewed Key Site One a few months ago. Drive-in, drive-in restaurants produce air quality problems. They have not been addressed, in this case, as of yet, but I'm convinced with the new emphasis in the state on greenhouse gases, we're going to determine that idling vehicles is something we should be discouraging. There are regulations in place now for certain vehicles, diesel vehicles, they're coming for gasoline-powered vehicles, and they may be even in effect by the time we review this project. But I, as I say, I would not support the project with a drive-through. The question of whether there should be a fast food restaurant, a coffee Starbucks-type place, or a place that food could be obtained, I would reserve judgment on. Certainly, the noise factor is neutralized by having the activities indoors or in the surrounding courtyards, which would be available for outdoor eating. Some of the neighbor concerns about increasing transient use of their neighborhood, I don't share those concerns. Frankly, I think what we have here is a facility which could be used by the neighborhood to benefit, and those neighbors perhaps would return to the neighborhood with trash, and hopefully would put it in trash containers. But I'm not worried about people coming off the 101 and going into Cimarron Estates to eat food and cause problems. So I guess I'd say to the developer, think hard about the drive-through aspect of the fast food restaurant, the situation of not knowing which tenants are going to be there. I mean, is it going to be a bank? Is it going to be a medical office? Is it going to be a retail store? These are all so much different in terms of the traffic demands, that it's very hard to make a commitment as to what the result of that review would be.
Thank you. You know, it's interesting, I took, this morning, when I did my site visit, I drove around Cimarron Estates, and what a nice feel this little, this area has in here as a community. And I thought, wasn't, wouldn't that be nice? So if I lived in here, I could think about walking up to here to whatever kind of store might be there. And so I appreciated what the neighbors had to say, because I, what I feel is in this, what is being proposed, is that it's just a car-centric development. And this is ideal to have people walk here. It should be more pedestrian-friendly, and a drive-through is not pedestrian-friendly. It just sucks all the life out of any center that you ever have, where you have drive-throughs. And I'm, I'm not in favor of drive-through. For people to get out of their car and walk up, I think is fine. Joyce, would you put back up that other site plan? One thing, what happens is, when you have a drive-through, you're planning for the car, you're not planning for the people. Would you go more to the detailed site plan, please? Next one. The landscaping, where you have the landscaping. Well, that's good enough. What we have, what is being proposed, is that there are seating areas out here adjacent to the parking areas. I don't get it. And down here as well. You know, I live in Golita, and I walk down the Kyriell Shopping Center, where there are, there is a drive-through, one drive-through, and there are several outdoor restaurants, where you can go in, and there's a coffee bean and tea leaf, and some others. And what they did, this shopping center was in place, I don't know, 40 years ago, they extended the sidewalks, so that there could be more area for people to sit out there and drink coffee, or eat, or whatever. But here, we have an opportunity to plan a neighborhood-friendly development without having it impacted by the cars. And this is not what we've done. This is 20th, early, mid-20th century thinking on how to design a shopping area for a neighborhood. And so I'm very, very disappointed to see that there hasn't been sort of more creative thinking about how we can separate the cars from the pedestrians, how we can make it a more pedestrian-friendly and interesting shopping center. This is a, for the neighborhood. I don't think it's for people coming off of 101, or people driving down Clark. The big shopping- of 101 or people driving down Clark. The big shopping center across the way is going to have drive-throughs and other sorts of facilities that are more regional in nature, but this should be for the residents of the area. I'm very concerned about Mr. Robertson's comment, that if there are problems with traffic movements coming in here, that they'll just block this off and there's only right out. You know, I've seen that in other developments, and I'm going, can't we have done some pre-planning where we can avoid that, where we can think about, well, maybe this will be a problem, and think about how we can do it better? Because what this says is, oh, whoops, the cars are overwhelming and we need to reduce it. Let's think about how this can be more pedestrian-friendly. I think having five-foot sidewalks here is a travesty. If people are coming, are on Clark, taking bus, they need more than five-foot sidewalks. Seriously, I'm a walker, and the ones on Qireal where you have traffic whizzing by at 40 miles an hour, you feel very unsafe. And it's a good thing they're 10 feet or however wide they are. But this needs to be a walkable. You can, people aren't going to go from Simran, drive their car, they're going to walk over here, I hope. You know, I hope you'd do that. We even have, where I live, and I'm maybe a half a mile, and we all walk over there. So, you know, there was another speaker talked about Santa Maria. This is not Santa Maria, this is Orchid. And Orchid is different, and I appreciate the difference. And I'd like to see the applicant realize that difference. I don't think you've done that here. I think this is horribly awkward, that we have all these drive aisles. We come in, go up, go through a parking lot, go through another parking lot to get out, or turn around and go out this way. I think it's very, very awkward. I think it needs to be rethought, how you want to do this. But I'm certainly not in favor of a drive-through. I'm in favor, and even, I think Commissioner Brooks pointed out, a mile away in a neighborhood park, I find trash from quick food places, fast-food places. So there is a sense of what they do. They do change the character of the neighborhood. And I think that this is, the neighborhood deserves better than this, than what is being proposed. So I would hope that Ms. Murra and her applicant would go back and consider what, how the neighborhood particularly feels about this, and relook at some of these issues. So that's all I have to say. Anyway, so unless any commissioners have any other comments, we-
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a comment. You know, we're trashing fast foods, and they're the most successful businesses that we have right now. Fast foods, McDonald's is the most successful fast-food business. And why is that? Because people go there to eat. Jack in the Box, Taco Bell, all these are extremely, they just opened a Panda Express in Lompoc. You couldn't get in there because, you couldn't get in there, mess of traffic, but because everybody wanted to go to these things. People, it's not just teenagers that want to create crime, like somebody was saying here, it's soccer moms who are in a hurry trying to feed their children, get them through, get a meal, and get on out where they don't have to get out of the car. It creates less carbon footprint than a car idling and somebody going out and starting the car again. So let's be careful. This, what we're looking here is just a conceptual view. Should Key Site Four be developed? We're getting in a little depth, and we can't help it because we all do it, it's just part of our job, but we do it. We're getting into the physical things of the parking and the buildings and all that, but all that is going to be discussed in detail when the development plan comes in. And from our comments here, although some of us agree and some do not agree, the developer may go through and reorient his buildings and take our comments. But it's not, what we have before us is not a plan, it is just a concept. Do you think it's all right to go in there and develop this? You know? Is that the case? Yes. Is it within the guidelines of the community plan? Yes, go forward with it. But you're doing it at your own expense. Keep in mind the comments that were made here. Keep in mind that the public was very adamant about certain things. If you make a big investment in your project and you come before it, it might not get approved. It may get approved, it may not. And if you see 30, 40 people here, you might have 100 people here. So that's happened in the past, just beware.
Thank you, Commissioner Valencia. And with that, we'll conclude this particular agenda item and move on into our consent. Back to you, Ms. Van Mullen. However, which one you want to do? We're going to do C3 first, okay? So this is, Ms. Van Mullen, you have some changes, or perhaps you'd like to take the lead here?
Yes, Madam Chair, thanks. Have we already read these into the record? Okay, why don't we go ahead and do that first?
No, yeah, we're going to just take a two-minute break here while we set up for the next one. Thank you. Ms. Black, if you would just please read this item into the record. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the following is a hearing on the request of Jeff Hablick, real property agent for Public Works, to consider case number 10 GOV5 for a determination that the proposed vacation of a portion of Stillwell Road and the vacation and sale of a portion of Clark Avenue right-of-way is consistent with the comprehensive plan of the County of Santa Barbara pursuant to Government Code Section 65402A.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Van Mullen.
Madam Chair, commissioners, thank you for trailing these items. I just wanted to add reference, or recommend that you add a reference to SEQA in the consistency report before it goes to the board. And so I'm just recommending, no change to the recommended action or the motion, just an added sentence in, at the end of the project description, that the action is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15312, which has the, which addresses the sale of surplus government property. And so that is actually the same for C3 as well as C2.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Commissioner Valencia?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we accept the staff recommendation and make that as a motion for this project.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
And just to make sure if we've taken public comment-
We haven't, I was just going to do that. Any public comment on this? Okay, you have no public comment, you had a speaker slip. Okay, all right. So we close the public comment period, and then, so we've had the motion, and we've had a second, and then, yeah, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, and then we move on to agenda item, I think it's-
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, I'm going to take a break for one minute. Be back on the record. All right, back to, back on the record for item C2. And this is in the 3rd District. If you read that in the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Jeff Hablick, Public Works Department, to consider case number 10 GOV4, application filed on May 26, 2010, for a determination that the proposed abandonment and sale of fee ownership of a portion of the North Refugio Road is consistent with the comprehensive plan of the County of Santa Barbara pursuant to Government Code Section 65402A.
Okay, thank you. 3rd District.
I'm ready to make a motion on it. We have no public speakers. So I move that we accept the staff recommendation as amended. Do we have to do the same thing now for, may I ask county counsel on that one?
That's correct. Madam Chair, Commissioner Brooks, I just recommend the same change I did to C3, which is just that the action is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15312.
Okay, then I move that we accept that staff recommendation with that, I guess amendment by county counsel.
I'll second it.
Okay. And there being no public comment, and any further discussion?
Madam Chair, did a site visit.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I would like to offer just one observation. This is a case, we've seen a few of these in the past, where a subdivision would not be possible except for the participation by the county in terms of offering up surplus land. And that may be beneficial from a financial standpoint to the county, but I think we should be aware of the fact that we're creating an extra lot with all that involves as a result of the county's participation in making the land available. So as a general policy matter, I just, I'm going to watch more carefully where the effect of a county land transfer enables subdivision that would otherwise not be possible.
Okay, any further comment? No? With that, Mr. Rodriguez, would you do the roll call, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye. Thank you. And so we've finished-
Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you. So we'll move on to our first regular agenda item, which is the Plantel Nursery. And Ms. Rodriguez, if you'd read that into the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Following is the hearing on the request of Ray Severn, agent for Plantel Nurseries, Inc., owner to consider case number 08 DVP7, application filed on February 26, 2008, and to adopt the negative declaration 09 NGD4 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
Thank you. And ex parte and site visit disclosure, please. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I visited the site.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Blau?
Site visit, yes, thank you.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I made a site visit on, yesterday, Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Cooney?
I just drove by the site, staying all the time on Clark Avenue.
Okay, thank you. I made a site visit this morning. I went onto the site, and I have had, via our planner, Ms. Carmichael, sort of an email discussion with the applicant regarding the tiger salamander and the retention basin issue. So with that, Ms. Carmichael, thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Brown and commissioners. The Plantel Nursery's development plan would allow for the phased construction of a vegetable transplant nursery totaling approximately 1,014,720 square feet at completion. The project site is located approximately one and a half miles east of Highway 101 and north of Clark Avenue, just outside of the Orchid Community Plan boundary. The subject parcel is 136.75 acres in size and is located in the Ag 2-100 Zone District. The eastern portion of the property is planted with blackberries and is developed with temporary hoop structures. The proposed project would be developed on the westerly 60 acres of the subject parcel, which currently contains existing growing areas managed by Plantel Nursery. Surrounding land uses include agricultural uses such as row crops, flowers, and grazing, as well as oil drilling operations. The nearest residence to the project site is located approximately 1,000 feet to the east. Lake Maria Estates is located approximately 4,000 feet to the west of the site. Plantel Nurseries grows vegetable starter and organic transplants for local growers in Santa Barbara County. Once grown, the starter plants are shipped back to the grower where they are planted directly into the ground. Plantel currently operates three separate facilities, which are located on Telephone Road, Sinton Road, and in Gary. The applicants have indicated that they plan to relocate two of these locations to the project site on Clark Avenue. The project would include a total of 21 greenhouses with a maximum height of 30 feet. In addition, an office and warehouse would also be constructed. The proposed project also includes associated driveways, roadways, landscaping, as well as grading. Water would be provided by the Golden State Water Company, as well as an existing on-site well. And sanitary services would be provided by two proposed septic systems. Access would continue to be provided by existing driveways that are located off of Clark Avenue. The project would be constructed in three phases. Phase one would consist of the construction of the office, the warehouse building, four of the greenhouses, the detention pond, water recycling infrastructure, landscaping, and also the roads. Phase two would add 11 additional greenhouses, and phase three would add the final six greenhouses. These are examples of the types of greenhouses and structures associated with the project. The North Board of Architectural Review has conceptually reviewed the project on March 14, 2008, and April 4, 2008. They also conducted a site visit on April 4 at that meeting. When the project returns to the VAR for preliminary and final approval, the VAR would like the applicant to provide detailed landscaping, grading cross-sections, and some additional driveway details. These pictures show additional details of the inside of the greenhouses, the outside growing areas, and also the planting process. The project site would continue to take access from two existing driveways off of Clark Avenue, and this picture is a view looking west towards Highway 101. And this is another view of the site from Clark Avenue looking towards one of the existing driveways. And then finally, this is another view from Clark Avenue, and in this picture you can see the existing hoop, temporary hoop structures, and they're shown on the right-hand side of the photo. This is a view of the project site looking west. And the site is currently developed with existing open growing areas towards the northern end of the site, project site area. So these next few photos are showing that area of the site. So once again, this is facing southeast, and this is looking south. A draft mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the proposed project and was circulated through the state clearinghouse for a 30-day public comment period. Comment letters were received from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District, and the Native American Heritage Commission. And these letters are included in Attachment C of the staff report. The project site is located within the range of the California tiger salamander, a federally endangered species. A California tiger salamander habitat evaluation and amphibian management plan was prepared by Hunt and Associates, which analyzed the proposed project for impact- driveways. And then finally, this is another view from Clark Avenue, and in this picture you can see the existing hoop, temporary hoop structures, and they're shown on the right-hand side of the photo. This is a view of the project site looking west. And the site is currently developed with existing open growing areas towards the northern end of the site, project site area, so these next few photos are showing that area of the site. And once again, this is facing southeast, and this is looking south. A draft mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the proposed project and was circulated through the State Clearing House for a 30-day public comment period. Comment letters were received from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District, and the Native American Heritage Commission. And these letters are included in Attachment C of the staff report. The project site is located within the range of the California Tiger Salamander, a federally endangered species. A California Tiger Salamander Habitat Evaluation and Amphibian Management Plan was prepared by Hunt and Associates, which analyzed the proposed project for impacts to biological resources, including the tiger salamander. And the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service reviewed the draft mitigated ND prepared for the project, and they issued a comment letter dated March 13, 2009, which initially concluded that the project could result in a take of CTS and their red-legged frog. And this conclusion was based upon traffic, lighting, and chemicals such as pesticides and fertilizers associated with the proposed nursery. Following the receipt of this letter, the applicants subsequently met with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to discuss the concerns related to the tiger salamander and the red-legged frog. Following the meeting, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service issued a letter on April 5, 2010, which now concludes that the project as proposed is not likely to result in a take of California tiger salamander or California red-legged frog. Now, this is, this is due to the fact that additional measures will be implemented to avoid the take of the listed species during construction activities, and additional measures will be implemented to substantially reduce the effects of ongoing practices on the parcel to sensitive habitat. And also, if any listed species are found at the site, all work will stop, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service will be contacted immediately. In order to offset potentially significant impacts to amphibians identified in the California Tiger Salamander Habitat Evaluation and the Amphibian Habitat Management Plan, the proposed detention basin would be designed and engineered to mimic the function of a natural vernal pool. This would be accomplished by enlarging the existing natural basin that holds seasonal surface water from .36 acres to 2.73 acres, and approximately 4.2 acres will be set aside as open space in that area. And that area will be managed as, for wildlife habitat. The basin is required to be constructed in accordance with the Amphibian Habitat Management Plan, which is included in the staff report as Attachment L. And prior to reaching the basin, all irrigation water and most of the runoff associated with rain events will be directed to a clarification basin. And any rainwater that accumulates in the detention basin will not be pumped out and will be allowed to naturally percolate into the soil while at the same time creating a valuable habitat for amphibians. The proposed project is consistent with all applicable comprehensive plan policies and zone district standards. And in conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission make the required findings for the project specified in Attachment A of the staff report, adopt the negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring program contained in the conditions of approval, and approve the project subject to the conditions included as Attachment B. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any questions for Ms. Carmichael? Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Carmichael, was there any analysis done that you're aware of, of lighting of the greenhouses, night lighting, which might impact surrounding land uses?
Chairman Brown and Commissioner Cooney, the applicant, to my knowledge at this point, has not prepared a separate lighting plan. However, any lighting that is associated with the greenhouses will be required to be facing downward onto the project site. I also would like the applicant to comment on this, because I believe that there is minimal lighting associated with the greenhouses for night lighting, but I would like the applicant to add some additional information. Thank you.
And if there are no other questions, then we turn it over to the applicant.
Honorable Chair, members of the commission, I am Ray Severn. I'm a planner with Penfield &amp; Smith Engineering. And I am here today helping Plantel with their process entitlements with Santa Barbara County. And with me, we're just here to urge you to approve the project subject to conditions that are in the staff report. And Plantel is here represented also by their President, Scott Nicholson, and Lester Grohl, their Chief Operating Officer, as well as two real Penfield &amp; Smith engineers. And we're just here urging you to take staff's recommendation. We really don't have anything to add, and we want to be thankful, and we're appreciative of the staff's hard work on this. It was also a project that we were able to meet with U.S. Fish and Wildlife on and spent some extensive time. And the, the shape of the detention basin is not the basic rectangular one, it's really organic. It's been driven by Larry Hunt, and we've worked extensively with him to design that basin. And so when the grading plan part of this came up, we basically broke this off from the landscape plan, and we are doing a special re-vedge program that Larry's designing. It's almost done, but it has been contemplated throughout, and that basin has been designed from a biological point of view. So with that, I just want to say that we're all listening intently to the further concerns of the commission on this, as well as any concerned citizen, and we just want to work with them and spend time with them to understand the project. And so we're available for any more questions you might have.
I have two questions for you. One is, Commissioner Cooney, if you would respond to that regarding night lighting of the greenhouses? I believe that's what's his question.
It's very minimal, but I'd like to call Scott up-
Okay, great, thank you.
-and have him describe exactly what's going on there.
Hi, Commissioners, I'm Scott Nicholson-
Welcome.
...and I'm president of Plantel Nursery. And we do not have night lighting of the greenhouses. We don't, and we don't accentuate the growth of the plant, so the actual greenhouses don't have night lighting. We do have lights inside the greenhouses if for some reason we need to walk in there after hours or something, but they're just very minimal lightings. And the same is true, the warehouses will have some lights on them for some night activities if we are ever out there, but they will be shielded and directed down.
Commissioner Cooney?
Mr. Nicholson, thank you. That's, that's encouraging. As you may know, some greenhouses in the county have raised controversy due to the use of night lighting for plant growing. You know, there's a completely different issue with regard to turning a light on to find your way around or in emergencies or whatever, but, but your statement is that it's not part of the growing process.
No, it is not. We do not use night lighting.
So you wouldn't have a problem if the, if the project description indicated that, that lights are not used for growing?
I would have no problem with that at all.
All right, thank you. Also, maybe I could ask Mr. Nicholson, just, the staff report mentions three large 250,000-gallon tanks for water. Obviously, this is important if you're going to be growing plants, but, and I see where they're located on the site plan. How tall are they going to be? Are they going to be visible from Clark Avenue?
They're located considerably back from Clark Avenue, and they're not overly tall. They're wide, but they're not tall, so that, I think they're about 16 feet tall. And also, for a clarification on the water storage tanks, one of the tanks will actually be for fresh water out of the well. The other two storage tanks we have are actually designed as part of our water recycling system. And so we will be capturing our runoff water and our irrigation water and pumping it back to one of the other two tanks. And so it's, two of the tanks will be part of water recycling, and we're really hoping to have a good benefit from recycling the vast majority of our water.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Brown. Mr. Nicholson, when you were giving me the tour yesterday of your existing facility, which I was very impressed with as far as the layout and the landscaping and the efficiency that I saw in the operation, in one of the greenhouses there you pointed out something, a piece of equipment that you have to utilize, let's say, you know, on a cold evening. Now, if you're saying, what would happen if you had to go out in an emergency situation, let's say to the greenhouses, you know, to do frost prevention work? Would you have to turn the lights on? I would assume you would. How, how do you reconcile those two things?
The, we would turn the lights on if we had to work in the greenhouses, but we're talking about just standard, small lighting, not, when you use lights for growth, you have high-intensity lights, they're very, you know, very powerful. The lights that we would use would just be enough for us to be able to see inside the greenhouse.
But does this, do these lights then light up the entire greenhouse, the entire row of the greenhouse?
No, they don't.
I think that's the issue, that it looks like, you know, an outer spaceship or something.
No, it's, it's very minimal lighting, you know, it would be something maybe equivalent to in your garage or something like that, something, you know, it's not big lighting fixtures or anything like that.
Okay. I have a question for you, and I appreciate the, all the work that you've done with Fish and Wildlife Service. There's, and I realize that's not, we can't condition that, that's their thing, but a question for you, because it does sort of pertain to something that's going to be looked at by the VAR, where in their letter it says that, it talks about the grass we planted on the roadways to further reduce erosion. Well, if they're expecting you to do that, and that's a part of your, your deal with them, it seems like that we should sort of be, you should be honoring that in your landscape plan. And I don't know, I didn't, I've seen the preliminary landscape plan, I didn't know whether or not that was reflected in here.
All the mitigation measures that we have agreed to with Fish and Wildlife Service are on the adjacent parcel. Our project site is on 60 acres, and it's on the west side of our property. All our mitigation measures with Fish and Wildlife Service are on the east side of our parcel, on the 80 acres on the east side.
Right.
And so none of the mitigation measures actually affect the project site.
Okay. So, but where it says the grass we planted on roadways to further reduce erosion, can you show me where that, that's on, so that's not part of, that's got nothing to do with the landscape plan you're proposing?
No, it doesn't.
That's, okay, that, that answers my question.
Okay.
In, in that regard, then, okay. So you'll just be doing that as part of your, your good faith effort in working with them?
With U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
Yeah. You know, I do have to make a comment that, you know, we've read recently, there was an article in the Independent, our little local newspaper, about the tiger salamander and the conflicts it does propose for landowners in North County. And I, I do have to admit that I really appreciate the extent that you've gone here to work with Fish and Wildlife, and I realize that they, they kind of told you that you had to do that, but it seems to me that you're going sort of above and beyond in doing some things. And I, and I think that this is a really good standard to show how property owners can in fact work to mitigate some of these issues and to work to help wildlife habitat.
Well, thank you for that comment.
Yeah.
We do try to be good environmental stewards.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's fabulous. And I don't think I had, the only other, the question I had, and I know that I passed this to Dana, that considering all the work that you're doing here and all the conditions, which if, and I did read Hunt's, his basic management plan, if you would be willing to have monitoring in perpetuity, and you had indicated that you would, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but, or once a year to come, someone come out and take a look at, to make sure that you're following the standards that are imposed and the conditions?
Yes, we would be willing to do that.
Okay. I would think that would be kind of, you want to show off the great project you have here, but anyway, so. So with that, is there anything else you'd like to tell us about your project?
I have my light on, yes.
I don't, oh, you do have your light on, sorry. Okay.
Yes, I have a question. I, I, when I went on my site visits, I went to the highest spots out on the road where I could see and make sure that there wasn't any glare, because there were complaints in Santa Maria of the, I mean, in carpentry of those type of buildings. But you have no glare whatsoever off of those covers. And it says in the report that you used non-reflective paint. That's true. You never have any problem with glare?
We have not had any problems with glare. We don't use, we don't use any paint on the actual greenhouse roofs, it's just plastic, but we don't-
On the clear plastic, you don't have a glare problem? Communities don't, you don't have a problem with glare?
No, we've not had any complaints.
And then the other thing I was curious is, you had 132 parking spaces. Do you have that many employees come in, or do you?
No, we don't. Because of the sizes of our buildings, the warehouse in particular, it's my understanding that the county requirements require us to have that many spaces. I don't honestly think we'll ever use half that many. But because of the size of the buildings, like the warehouse building in the back, a third of that whole building is actually growth chamber, and so there's no people in there, it's just getting the plant started and that kind of stuff. So I think that, I think it's a lot of parking spots.
You could have gotten done without 80 of those parking spaces.
Yeah.
All right, all right. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Blau?
Well, that raises a question. I mean, I think with the, our staff question, or maybe ask our attorney, but given that information, do we have the ability to reduce his parking requirement? Because I don't want him building any more impervious surfaces than are necessary for his operations. So I might not have a problem with reducing your parking down to 80 or whatever you think is reasonable, and you don't have the expense of building him, and you don't have the adverse environmental impact. So maybe staff could comment on that for us?
Chairman Brown and Commissioner Blau, the analysis that we did on the parking actually shows that the required number of spaces would be 107 spaces, and they are showing 132 proposed. So it would be possible to reduce it down to 107 and still meet the county's requirement, parking requirements.
So if I could, the question back to the applicant is, is 107 still too many? Or is that about right?
That would be fine. I think 107 parking spots would be good. I think the engineers designed our parking system, and I think why we ended up with the number that we did was just, it was a nice layout.
Okay.
You know, and-
Whatever. I, I guess we'll make sure that you're aware that 107 is probably the, is the minimum requirement, you don't need to build more than 107.
Okay.
I think that's pretty clear.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Brown. In our discussion yesterday, I also questioned, you know, why, you know, the need for so many parking spaces. But at that time, you had mentioned that, you know, in the future, you, there would be some consolidation of, of your facilities and that you would eventually use that many.
We will, in the long-term future, we will have consolidation of our facilities there, but even with the consolidation of all our facilities, we're projecting about 50 employees max at the, at the site.
In your parking area, do you have to, is it a requirement that you asphalt it?
No, it is not a requirement to asphalt, so we can-
You can just build a dirt lot.
-go with compacted base.
Okay.
And so the expense, expense is not that great, and so-
Okay, and you have to, I presume, provide handicap spaces as well?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Okay, any public, thank you very much, Mr. Nicholson. Thank you. We have any public comment on this project? Okay. We've got Ray and Ms. Smith, Lilian. Good to see you.
It's nice to see you all again.
Good.
Chairman Brown and Commissioners. I have more of a presentation as to process-
Okay.
...and biological resources as a result of it. I must say that I'm well acquainted with greenhouses. My grandfather was a professional gardener, and I have vivid memories of a greenhouse. I want to point out that the mitigated negative declaration before you, for the project, was prepared pursuant to a, pursuant to a CEQA guideline, Section 15070, which is presented in the document. Actually, Public Resources Code 21080 and Sections particularly B is the authority for a negative or a mitigated negative declaration, and it's important what the text says. It states that a negative declaration shall be adopted when two conditions are met. One, the project effects have been mitigated to a point where they are clearly, and that's a quote, "clearly insignificant." And two, there is no substantial evidence before the agency that the project as revised may have a significant effect. And I hope I didn't hear the gentleman before me say that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife mitigations were not for the parcel, but for the 80 acres adjoining. Please tell me I didn't hear that. A negative declaration, in the negative declaration, Attachment A, Findings 2.1.2 for your reference, it reads, "Adverse impacts will be mitigated to the maximum extent feasible." The phrase "maximum extent feasible" has no place- feasible has no place in a negative declaration, even though it may occur in the county land use development for EIRs. Going on to biological resources specifically, page fifteen, attachment C reads, implementation of the following mitigation measures which would reduce impacts to biological resources to an adverse but less than significant level. Page three gives us a little clue to what that means, not, not a lot, but this is the quote, "An impact is, is considered adverse but does not trigger a significant threshold." Well, you have to, to look and see where are our significant thresholds if we're going to understand what that means. It's questionable that the negative declaration document could employ, which they do, adverse but does not trigger a significant threshold to suggest an impact has been reduced to less than significant, given the text of the county thresholds manual. And I'll give you the page number, page thirty-three revised ten two thousand and two. It provides that there are no significance thresholds for biological resources, and this is how it reads. "Due to the complexity of ecosystems and the many factors involved in assessing the values of biological resources and project impacts, general qualitative guidelines rather than numerical thresholds are provided." The threshold manual has no thresholds for biological resources due, due to the complexities of ecosystems. And the thresholds manual does rely on, on CEQA appendix G, however, those are qualitative as well. I want to point out that the, the most interesting section to me in the negative, mitigated negative declaration for biological resources, it's on page fifteen, paragraph, paragraph three, and I think it's worth reading. "The following special status wildlife species historically except occupied the subject parcel and in the case of birds and mammals may still occasionally occur there. But in general, most of the subject parcel no longer provides foraging habitat for these species." So I imagine that they used adverse with significant nonexistent thresholds, and I, I only have, oh, I'm getting more time, am I?
No, I'm just waiting for you to wrap up.
Oh, okay. I, I am interested in attachment C, page seventeen, "The proposed detention basin would be managed primarily as a wildlife habitat." US Fish and Wildlife Bio, page fourteen, paragraph five, letter concludes that chemicals associated with the project would be pesticides, herbicides, and fungicides. And I, I want to know, how is the water purification in this wildlife habitat detention basin going to be handled? And if the, if the, if the negative declaration implies that there will be filters or techniques which are not defined, such as quote, other source control measures. I, I do want to, to wrap this up, but I want to say that the negative declaration fails to explore the presence of the branchiopod, the fairy shrimp. As I've been told, the fairy shrimp are not specific to the San Inez Valley. And, and as referenced, the Integrated Waste Management Facilities project for the city of Santa Maria on Dominion and Palmer Road, carried out through Ring Cone Environmental Consultants, a survey for the branchiopod. And therefore, I consider this, this document to fail in that respect, as well as some of the other respects that I've mentioned, which are, are minimal.
All right. Thank you. I'll have, if I may, have Ms. Carmichael answer your question about the...
Thank you.
The water in the detention basin, then, then our counsel.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Brown.
Thank you.
As the applicant spoke about earlier, any runoff associated with irrigation is going to actually go directly, being piped directly to a clarification system. And there are a number of tanks associated with that. So the water will go to the tanks first, where it's cleaned and clarified, and then will be used, recycled and reused. The only water that will actually reach the detention basin itself will be rainwater associated with seasonal rain events. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Van Mullen, would you like to respond to any of Ms. Smith's concerns?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm happy to address any of your questions in relation to her comments.
Okay.
But I will just comment on one, one item that she mentioned, which is the incorrect reference to CEQA guideline one five zero seven zero. And as with most areas of CEQA, there's a Public Resources Code, as well as a CEQA guideline that applies to many areas. And so while she's correct that two one oh eight zero applies to negative declarations, that's the CEQA section, there's also a guideline section that applies, and that's correct, that it's one five zero seven zero.
So it's you use one or the other, or you use...
You can use either one. Usually, we use both. But it's not incorrect to only cite to the guideline and not cite to the CEQA section. They both apply, and they both address the standard for negative declarations.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Cooney.
I, I just wanted to clarify if we could. I was under the impression, and I've checked in the staff report again, that the size of the site we're dealing with is a hundred and thirty-six point seventy-five acres. So I was thinking, Mr. Nicholson may have misspoke when he said the, the mitigation is arranged on a, on an adjacent parcel. I think he means on an adjacent portion of this parcel, but i- is that correct?
Chairman Brown and Commissioner Cooney, that is correct. The entire parcel's a hundred and thirty-six point seven-five acres. This development would occur on the westerly sixty acres. So yes, the requirements for Fish and Wildlife Service would mostly occur on the eighty acres to the east, or the remaining part of the site.
Okay. And Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I'll address one more thing, which is that the speaker addressed the required findings under the LUDC as it relates to CEQA. And just a clarification that the commission is required to make the findings under the Land Use and Development Code, which are separate and apart from the adoption of the negative declarations, and the standards are slightly different. But both can address the environmental impacts of the project.
Okay. Okay. I just have one last thing, Commissioner Valencia, that I, I want to bring out, and this is really a question for Ms. Black. I note on the landscape plan that the applicant, or the landscape architect, is using a tree that is invasive, the chinas molay, the, one of the peppers, that your David Chang in the ag commissioner's office keeps sending out message emails, it says, you know, don't use this. So I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to ask BAR to have them use some other, other tree? And I'm just wondering what the mechanism might be for doing that.
Madam Chair and members of the commission, that would be completely appropriate, and I think we have a BAR condition, so you could just add that direction in within that condition.
Okay. All right. Okay. So if there's no other questions, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Valencia. I think this is in your district.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
With that, thank you for all the comments from my fellow commissioners. And with that, I'd like to make that following motion, that we make the required findings for the project specified in attachment A of this staff report, including the CEQA findings, that we adopt the negative declaration and adopt the mitigation monitoring program, containing the conditions of approval, and that we approve oh eight DVP zero string seven, subject to the conditions concluded as attachment B, and that we include all changes made at this meeting.
I'll second that.
Madam Chair, before the commission votes on that, perhaps we could have staff go through those condition changes so we all have some understanding.
Okay, good, thank you. Mr. Karamitos, were you going to take the...
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to very briefly address the parking question that you had. And in the ordinance itself, the purpose and intent states that the standards are considered minimums, but that more extensive, extensive parking provisions may be required by the commission. But it does not say you can reduce them down.
But you can.
We can.
Madam Chair, you can, in the context of a modification to a development plan.
Okay.
So with that, I would just suggest that you make it explicit, the number of parking spaces you're looking for.
Commissioner Blau.
The applicant was happy with a hundred and seven, so I think we'll just do that and be consistent with your staff report.
Right. Okay. And Ms. Carmichael, the other conditions, the change in, I think you were going to add one on lights, monitoring, and, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Chairman Brown. Now, condition number eleven, I have on the, a slide up here to revise condition number eleven.
Mm-hmm.
And it might be hard to read, but you, you'll see the final sentence as performance criteria and monitoring shall be completed yearly, and the results submitted to planning and development each spring. And that's based on language that comes from the amphibian habitat management plan.
Okay. This is on detention basin construction, though. Oh, and maintained, okay.
Right, so I did add and maintained.
I'm wondering if the title shouldn't be detention, detention basin, construction and maintenance?
Okay.
Just to make, make it, make that clear. Okay. And you're going to do one on lights? Commissioner Cooney, is that something that you...
It is, Madam Chair. And I, I thought, and in checking the attachment B, the conditions, that it would be appropriate simply to add it to the project description.
Okay.
There is no reference particularly to lighting in that, but the language I would propose would be just a separate paragraph at the end of the existing project description to the effect that interior lighting would not be utilized for plant propagation.
Then, Madam Chair, the number of parking spaces would also be changed in the project description condition to a hundred and seven.
Okay.
And the BAR condition, which is condition number thirty-five, would include the commission's request that the BAR review the, the plant palette, to ensure that no invasive...
Right.
Trees are being used.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes, thank you, Chair Brown. I had a concern, and probably, maybe it could be added to condition thirty-five, too, because I, I drove through the Lake Maria Estates project after I did my site visit, because I know from where I was standing, I could see the homes. And I'm just wondering, well, you know, could the homes, you know, what, what visual impacts this would have? And I could clearly see, I saw the trees, I guess, I don't know if they're eucalyptus or what's there, that form a break. But there is this stretch that seems to be fully visible, you know, from some of those perimeter sites. So could, could we add to that, you know, for BAR to, I don't think it's, you know, under our purview, to, you know, talk about the landscaping? But I, you know, we did discuss it as we looked there, you know, if, if the applicant would be willing to add some taller trees to make sure that the neighbors in Lake Maria Estates would not see, I guess that would be near the, the buildings that would be there versus the, you know, the greenhouses.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Brooks, I think what you're requesting is that the BAR pay attention on the landscape plan to screening of, from...
Right.
Maria Estates.
If, yeah, if possible, it may not...
The west.
Yeah, right. Okay. Okay. Okay, any, any other further discussion? So the motion, I think the only changes are the, some changes to the conditions.
And that was included.
Included, okay. So I think we're ready for, unless, okay. So, Ms. Rodriguez, would you like to call the question, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to take a, a short five-minute break. Set up for the next one.
Is there a long five-minute break?
It's a short five minute, it's a short one.
Two-minute one.
Short. It's a, it's a, it's a two-minute. I think that's, yeah. Oh, Hanson, I don't know. Mr. Haas, I'm probably not going to see, whoops. Ms. Rodriguez, would you read that into the record, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Brent Jones, of Jones and Jones LLP, agent for Mr. and Mrs. Donald Hanson, owners to consider the following: A, zero eight TPM seventeen application filed on December twentieth, two thousand and one; B, ten GOV six application filed on May twenty-eighth, two thousand and ten; and to adopt the negative declaration zero nine NGD two pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of CEQA.
Okay. Thank you. Ex parte and site visits. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you. I drove by the site on Monday.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I voted, I visited the site also.
And Commissioner Cooney?
I drove by the site, but before our last meeting.
Okay, thank you. And I did not visit the site, and I had no ex parte. Okay. Ms. Carmichael?
All right. Thank you, Chairman Brown and Commissioners. The Hanson tentative parcel map project would allow for a two-way land division located in the San Inez area. And the project site is located east of Highway one fifty-four at forty-eight fifteen Baseline Avenue. The project site is thirty-nine point six one acres gross and net, and is located within the San Inez Valley Community Plan in a rural area. The site is developed with a five thousand three hundred and ten square foot single-family dwelling and a one thousand six hundred and eight square foot detached garage. The site is zoned Ag one twenty and is located within the east Baseline Rancho Estates existing developed rural neighborhood. Surrounding zoning consists of Ag two forty, Ag one five, Ag one ten, and Ag two one hundred. Land uses on adjacent parcels consist of cattle grazing, cultivated agriculture, and low-intensity residential development. The existing parcel is thirty-nine point six one acres gross and net, which is less than the required forty acres necessary in order to accomplish the proposed tentative parcel map. Therefore, a government code consistency determination is required, which would allow for the abandonment and sale of fee ownership to the property owner of approximately nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty-one square feet of area underlining, underlying the Baseline Avenue right-of-way. This would increase the size of the subject parcel from thirty-nine point six one acres gross and net to forty point zero seven acres gross. The proposed tentative parcel map would subdivide the forty point zero seven acre parcel into two parcels of twenty point zero four acres and twenty point zero three acres, known as parcel one and parcel two. Access to parcel one would continue to be provided by an existing driveway accessed from Baseline Avenue, and access to parcel two would be provided by an easement over, over parcel one in favor of parcel two. Water for both parcels would be provided by a water well that's located on proposed parcel one. A draft mitigated negative declaration was circulated for public comments from April eighth, two thousand and ten, to April twenty-eighth, two thousand and ten. Written comments were received from the Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District, and these are included in attachment C of your staff report. The subject parcel is dominated by native perennial grasslands, mainly consisting of purple needle grass grassland. Oak woodlands and individual oak trees are also present on the north-facing slopes of three ephemeral drainages that are found on the property. In order to avoid potential impacts to native vegetation, the proposed map includes two development envelopes on proposed parcel two, and building restriction areas covering the undeveloped portions of proposed parcel one, where biological resources occur, and the remaining area of proposed parcel two. No structural development other than the proposed access road would be allowed in the designated building restriction areas. And this is a photo of building envelope number one on proposed parcel two. And this is a photo of the building envelope area number two on proposed parcel two. With the inclusion of the conditions of approval in attachment B of the staff report, the proposed project is consistent with all applicable comprehensive plan policies, the San Inez Valley Community Plan, and zone district standards. We do have a revision to condition number twenty that I'd like to mention, and that is to add additional language that states that prior to land use permit approval for future structures on, on parcel two, or the development of the access road crossing the... future structures on parcel two or the development of the access road crossing the drainage area, that the applicant shall obtain all necessary permits from the California Department of Fish and Game and then the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission make the required findings for the project specified in Attachment A of the staff report, including SEQA findings, adopt the negative declaration included as Attachment C of the staff report, and adopt the mitigation monitoring program contained in the conditions of approval, approve the project subject to the conditions included as Attachment B of the staff report, and determine that the proposed action to abandon and sell approximately nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty-one square feet of area underlying the Baseline Avenue right-of-way is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the San Inez Valley Community Plan, and transmit the consistency report required by Government Code Section six five four oh two A. Thank you.
Okay, any Commissioner questions?
Just a general question. Here, it's all included in one, one staff report, the acquiring of the special piece that didn't belong to them, and the request for the subdivision, and in the other staff report, we had to do them separate. Why is that?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Valencia, we really are required to respond to requests that we receive, so we have forty days from the date that General Services or any other county agency requests a consistency determination from your commission. In the previous cases, General Services requested earlier read on the consistency analysis, and on this particular case, it was just later in the process.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I had one question as far as the EDRN. I noticed that the monument sign that is for the Rancho Estates is actually, it's beyond, at least on the road, it's beyond this property, but you're saying, in fact, this is part of the Rancho Estates?
Yes, Chairman Brown and Commissioner Brooks, this is part of the EDRN.
Okay, thank you. Okay. If there are no other questions, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you. Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is Brett Jones, agent for Mr. and Mrs. Donald Hanson, and Mrs. Hanson is here with me this morning still, and we just want to answer any questions that you might have. We want to thank staff, in particular Ms. Carmichael, for her thorough staff report. We've actually had six planners on this project, and I thank Ms. Carmichael for getting this to the finish line, and do appreciate your consideration this morning. We do respectfully request your approval. And if I could just clarify a little bit on the government code consistency regarding the purchase of the property. We originally submitted back in two thousand and one. At that time, we were understanding that we did own, or the Hanson's owned, to the center line of Baseline Avenue. We did have a record of survey, in fact, one of the incompleteness items that came on our first incompleteness letter requested proof that we did own. We provided that proof, and that was not brought up again until, excuse me, two thousand and eight. Apparently, some decision had been made on refugio that brought it to our attention. So, when we first submitted, we did have the understanding and I think the backup to show that we did own to the center line. So, I don't really understand what happened in this two thousand and eight decision on refugio, but that was our understanding at the time, the submittal, that we owned to the center line. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing portion. Are there any notes? Then I'll close that and bring it back to the commission for any further questions or deliberations. No further questions? Then Commissioner Brooks, this is in your district.
Yes, before I go into a motion, I just have to say that, you know, now that we have our San Inez Community Plan adopted, this seems to be in line, you know, with all requirements. I was very glad to see that the biological resource issue is resolved by the establishment of the building envelopes. It's a lovely property. I could see the grasses up on the hill, and I haven't heard from any of the neighbors, and everything seems to be satisfactory.
Okay. I just have one question for Ms. Carmichael. We have in the conditions oak tree protection, and I'm not sure with the maps that I've seen, are there oak trees in or near the development envelopes or on the development envelopes?
Chairman Brown, there are oak trees near the development envelopes. I can put up a map that would show.
Can you?
We could, well, maybe this is the best one.
Can you turn off the light, please? Yeah, thank you.
Mainly, building envelope number two on proposed parcel two.
Right.
There are oak trees with, within that area.
Okay. Would, sometimes we see in projects where we do pre-construction surveys for nesting birds, and I'm wondering if that might be appropriate here? If the applicant would be okay with that, and if the Commissioner of the district would be okay with that as well? Commissioner Brooks, as an additional condition?
That's, I think, satisfactory, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay, then I will make the motion that we make the required findings for the project as specified in Attachment A, including the SEQA findings. We adopt the negative declaration included in Attachment C, adopt the mitigation monitoring program contained in the conditions, I believe with the additional language to condition twenty that you mentioned. We approve the project subject to the conditions in Attachment B, and that we determine that the proposed action to abandon and sell the area underlying the Baseline Avenue right-of-way is consistent with the comp plan and the San Inez Valley Community Plan, and we transmit the consistency report required by Government Code six five four oh two A.
Second.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just have one slight revision to the motion. It involves finding three point four, and that's the Chapter twenty-one findings. It's just the language of the finding itself, not the support for it. It changes the timing. It should be revised to read, "Grading or construction work shall not be commenced prior to recordation of the final or parcel map without specific authority granted by and subject to conditions approved by the Board of Supervisors." Right now, it reads that grading or construction may not be performed prior to approval, and it really should be prior to recordation, which is just difference in timing.
Okay. Okay, so, you'll make that, okay, you'll make that comment, and the second will support that, okay.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, one more comment?
I'm sorry.
If I might, just for the record, to make clear that the applicant consents to the additional condition.
I saw him nod when I, yeah. So, he said he agreed, so that wasn't a problem. Okay. Okay, so, with that, if you'll call the question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Carmichael, for two fine projects. I know you spent a lot of time on them, and it's very good. We appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to just take a one-minute break. A short one-minute, and if maybe we can accommodate Mr. Haas, and then we'll go do lunch. We'll take a short one-minute break. Thank you.[1143.12]
Okay, back on the record for Agenda Item Number Three. Ms. Rodriguez will be added to the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Annette Vera Molini Designs, Agent for Frank &amp; Inc., Inc., ePass, Owners to Consider Case Number 08 TRM 5 TM 14,753, Application filed on July 17, 2008, and to adopt the Negative Declaration 10 NGD 7 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of CEQA.
Thank you. Expertise in site visit, please. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I visited the site on Monday.
Commissioner Cooney?
I drove by the site this morning.
Thank you. Commissioner Valencia?
I visited the site.
Thank you, Commissioner Blau.
Long time ago when Mr. Haas was here earlier.
Okay, thank you. And I have not visited the site, but I think you can see it from 101. So, I've seen it many times from 101. Anyway, all right. So, welcome Florence, if you will please with the presentation.
Chair Brown, members of the Commission. The map above shows just the general outlying area with the city of built-in, the location of the project site, and US Highway 101. This is a map that shows surrounding area. And as you can see, the red hash mark is the parcel that Mr. Haas currently owns. The surrounding parcels are all developed, ranging in size from three-quarters to an acre, developed with single-family dwellings. To the south of Mr. Haas's parcel is the entrance to Bobcat Springs. And those parcels range anywhere from about three acres to in excess of 20 acres currently, and are developed as well with single-family dwellings. The proposed project is an eight-acre site, and it is an existing developed rural neighborhood with zoning of 1E1, and it is proposed to be an eight-way split. The original zoning on this parcel was CH Highway Commercial. With the adoption of the San Inez Community Plan in 2009, the zoning was changed to 1E1. Currently existing on this parcel is a smaller parcel of about 50 by 50, which is a water well owned by Mr. Georgie and others, which services the Camino San Carlos development. And as you can see here, you can see Hager Lane, which is a private lane, Camino San Carlos, which is also a private lane, and then Hanada Park Road. To the north of this property is the old Zaca Creek Restaurant. The project is proposed to remove two existing pine trees located on Lot 1 and possibly an oak tree, which is also located on Lot 1. The full-size plans that you received on the third page showed, which looked like building envelopes, there are no building envelopes proposed as part of this project, but appeared to be building envelopes for lots 5, 6, 7, and 8, are actually just areas to show the drainage of the proposed parcels. So again, there are no building envelopes proposed as part of this development. The project has been found to be consistent with the community plan, the comprehensive plan, and the Land Use and Development Codes. A mitigated ND was circulated for 30 days. Issues were aesthetics, air quality, bioresources, cultural resources, and water resources. What this shows here is an existing earthen berm that was approved under a previous map, TPM 14,588. The existing berm is approximately five feet high. It is proposed to be recontoured and landscaping will be added to increase this to about eight feet. And that's due to soften the views from 101. The parcels are relatively flat. We will not be requiring Board of Architecture Review on these parcels, but it's really to soften the view from Highway 101. And this again shows the access off of Hanada Park Road to Camino San Carlos, with that corner being Lot 8 of the proposed tract. This existing electrical panel, which currently serves the water wells and Lots 7 and 8, will be underground as all utilities will be. The utilities proposed for Lots 1 through 6 have currently been established through the previous development for Parcels A and B of 14, or 14,588. These are just some general pictures showing the site looking from different vantage points. And it kind of gives you just an overview of what it looks like from the homes that exist currently up on the hill. These particular buildings are scheduled to be removed. They were an old café placed on-site in about 1945. This café closed in 1958 due really to economic reasons. Once they rerouted Highway 101, there was no, it just wasn't used anymore as a restaurant. Staff does have some corrections to conditions, and I can go over those now, or I can wait until comments are received, whichever the Commission would prefer.
I want you to do it now. Just so we know where we're, give us a roadmap here.
The first condition is Condition 4, and that's lighting with regards to the San Inez Valley Community Plan. And the timing originally said 10 o'clock, that should be 9 o'clock. Conditions 16 and 17 are duplicate conditions. If you look at Conditions 12 and 13, those are the same conditions. And then I do have a rewording on Condition Number 23, which would read, "Prior to approval, land use permits for grading on Lots 5, 6, and 7, the applicant shall obtain Board of Architecture Review approval for required landscaping on the existing berm for Lots 5, 6, and 7, and increase to a height of eight feet. The existing five-foot berm shall be landscaped to adequately soften the views with trees and shrubs of the new structures from Highway 101. Prior to final occupancy of each lot, that lot's portion of the landscaping shall be installed. All project elements shall be compatible with vicinity development."
Why is no BAR approval required for the houses being built here?
Chair Brown, the existing area, there really was no nexus to get to Board of Architecture requirement for the houses. I do have an aesthetic condition that requires that they be earth tones, but there's no ridgeline. They sit lower, the parcels actually sit lower.
And there's nothing in the new San Inez Valley Community Plan that deals, that discusses that?
There was not, no.
No, okay. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cooney?
I understand that Highway 101 is a scenic highway, and I'm not sure if staff explored the connection there between the highly visible potential impact of the homes to be constructed there with the requirement of Architecture Review. But frankly, I can't see approving the project without it. The berm is totally inadequate to shield the entire project. And we have good examples up the road near Los Alamos of buildings right on the highway that are highly visible. And it just seems to me that this is an important contribution from the BAR to approve these structures. They're not going to be approved all at one time. They're going to be spaced out over time, and it's important that they tie in together. So, I think there's at least the beginnings of a basis there. And if we don't have one today, I'd be in favor of continuing the matter until we can fully explore that issue.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Cooney? If the Commission feels that this is an important component of project conditioning, I think you could easily tie it to the San Inez Community Plan policies relating to visual resources. And they begin on Page 11. Policy Vis San Inez Valley 1 and following. So I think you can make a nexus to require BAR if that's the desire of the Commission.
Madam Chair, just to add to that discussion, if I might. Mitigation Measure Number One of the ND actually does state that all elements of the project shall conform in all respects to BAR approval. Now, that mitigation measure was transformed when it was brought into the standard conditions of approval for this project. But I believe in the negative declaration, you already have that standard in there in mitigation measure number one as included in Attachment C, is it, of your packet? And so I think that just further strengthens the nexus that Director Black was talking about. Page 5 of the ND.
I have a question, and this is a question I asked. If you can talk to me about that water well number?
To what well?
The enclosure, that separate parcel?
Chair Brown, the existing water well located on Lot 1, again, is owned by separate individuals. That water well services Camino San Carlos. When we looked at setbacks for Lot 1, even with the water well as small as it is, it does have a chain link fence surrounding it. The setbacks could still be met without a building envelope. The majority of the easement for that well is located in the 30-foot utility easement. And the setbacks from the road easement and the utility easement for that lot would be 20 feet.
So if, but part of this, so it's about, okay. So it's would, so someone could build right up to that chain link fence, is what you're telling me?
Correct.
I'm just wondering if that's, I don't know, it's kind of unusual to see a separate parcel on another parcel without having any sort of conditions regarding that. I don't, we've never seen that before. I just would hope that there would be no future problems with having something like that. That would be my own thought. But I'm sure if there's a chain link fence, the owner of the property would know well that there's something there and get a title report and see that that property doesn't really belong to them. But I do wonder, Ms. Black, has there, is this kind of unusual to see where you have a separate parcel inside of another parcel? Does it create problems? Have you seen projects where this kind of creates some sort of problems?
Madam Chair and members of the Commission, it's not unusual because we have a number of well sites that were created some time back on separate parcels. Does it create problems?
Well, I just think of some maybe the appeals on where easements we've seen, where there have been easements, and there's been some disagreement about who can do what with what and what structures there.
I don't think we would take that approach today, but I don't believe there's really much we can do about it in this particular case.
Okay, all right, okay. Commissioner Blau?
It was a common practice for Cal City Waters. I've sold them a few of them. You know, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
I do have some other comments, though.
Okay, please.
On Condition 191A, I have no idea what that means. 191A?
Chair Brown, Commissioner Blau. After your question about that, we did review what we believe it means. And basically, if there's any excess soil on-site, they would prefer that it remain on-site and not be taken to a landfill. Even though landfills are wanting clean soil, that has been our interpretation of that.
Okay, so can you rewrite that before we approve this? Because if I have no idea what this means, and I do this for a living, I mean, I gotta believe somebody else has got to know what it means.
Right.
So, yeah. Then my other questions, let's see here. Condition 22. This condition just to me needs to be deleted, I think, because it's not a condition. Basically, what it says is that there's an encouragement to do solar systems, but there's no requirement to do so. That's not a condition. That's like a wish list or something. I don't think it belongs in here. And I had the same problem with most of the conditions in here that talked about solar electricity. I mean, the reality is that you think like, if feasible, I'd like to see you get rid of it. The reality is, is that if solar electricity is viable and economical, trust me, Mr. Haas or his subsequent owners are going to want to put it in. If it's not cost-effective and not feasible, they shouldn't have to be dealing with this condition, anybody in the staff, to prove that up. But clearly, 22 makes no sense because it's, you know, encouraged is not a condition. I think, well, she took care of the duplicate conditions that I talked to her about, and she took care of the language on Lots 5, 6, and 7. I was concerned the way it originally read. I couldn't tell for sure whether or not the entire landscape berm had to be done before we could have occupancy on any one of the three parcels. But the way it reads now is each parcel is responsible for its own section of the landscape berm. So, I do think Number 5 moves in. And Number 6 and 7 are not done with their landscape berm. It could still be, it could be done. I did have one other thing, I'm not sure where it is in here right now. But there's a condition here that basically reads that they can't do any grading on any of these parcels until after recordation of the track map. And I thought that's an inappropriate condition. The reality is, Mr. Haas, if he does less than 50 cubic yards today, could go out and grade. If he wanted to do more than 50 cubic yards, he has to contact, he has to propose a plan, go forward, and get approved. Well, I don't like conditions that read, "You can't do this operation until the map records," when if he wasn't recording a map, he could do that operation. So I think the condition needs to be changed to say that he can't do any grading on the property without a proper grading permit and plan. And it doesn't need to be tied to the recordation of the map.
Ms. Black? Ms. Maltman?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I can address that comment. Actually, that was the finding that I changed on the last item that we had. That's the language of Chapter 21. So when you're doing a subdivision map under Chapter 21, one of the findings is its grading or construction shall not be commenced prior to recordation of the final map.
Or could we add, "Or upon approval," for example?
Well, the exception is, "Without specific authority granted by and subject to conditions approved by the Board of Supervisors." So the Board has to authorize it directly.
Ms. Black?
Madam Chair, I'm going to make a suggestion, and I don't mean to cut off discussion. In fact, I want you to finish it. But I think we should take a break. We should look at these conditions and make sure that we've appropriately incorporated mitigation measures as conditions of approval.
Okay.
I guess my only concern would be, and maybe this isn't important to Mr. Haas, and I don't, it's not necessary to beat this stuff to death. But what if he indeed wanted to use the property for an egg purpose for the next five or 10 years after he gets his approval, and he needed to regrade the property for more than 50 cubic yards in order to do that? Could he do that?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Blau, maybe we need to reword the condition, but the intention is that they cannot do tract grading prior to recordation of the map.
So if, so he could do other grading other than that permission, I would be happy with that. I just hate to see, you know, a condition written where it prevents him from doing something that you would find reasonable a year from now.
Okay, I understand.
I just have a question on the earthen berm landscaping from something Commissioner Blau said. I would take it from the condition that the BAR reviews the landscaping for the berm lots 5, 6, and 7 all at one time. It's not done lot by lot, but maybe my...
I wasn't concerned about that. My concern was simply Lot Number 5 doing his portion, wanting to move in, but 6 and 7 weren't complete because there's no buyer for them, or it's not ready to be done. But the way I read the condition originally, I couldn't tell whether all three have to be done or just one. Now, she's changed the wording in the condition, I'm happy with it because it's clear now that each owner is responsible for his own. But that's why I questioned it, the first one.
Okay. Anything else? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, just before we take this short break, I do want to say I'm looking at the language of Condition 22, and then there was some other language, like I look at the language of Condition 30. These reflect the San Inez Community Plan's desires. And even though, you know, it uses words like "if feasible," I don't see that for Number 22. I think we have to keep in mind, there was some new language, you know, as I was reading through these conditions, you know, that I'm saying, okay, this is a result of what that community had decided upon, and we're taking it from the plan. And I might be wrong on that, but I just want to put that in so that everybody is reminded that this is our new San Inez Community Plan. Thank you.
A question for the Commission. Do we want to take a lunch break and then come back? I think that that's what we're going to do. I think staff's going to need a little time to go over these. So if I can ask your indulgence, Mr. Haas, we're going to take our lunch break, and we'll come back at 1 o'clock. You've waited how many years? 20 years? So an hour, 50 minutes will be okay? Okay, we'll take our lunch break, and we'll be back at 1 o'clock. Thank you all.
I think our recommendation is to continue this item for a week once you've finished your discussion and direction on it. There are some problems with the conditions of approval. And what occurred was, between the time that this mitigated negative declaration was distributed, prepared and distributed, and the time that Florence prepared the conditions, we changed our standard conditions document. And so, whoops, Ms. Trotter attempted to use the new conditions in lieu of the mitigation measures in the ND, and it's just, it's clunky.
Okay.
So I think we want to clean that up and clean up a few other issues that have arisen, and just have a cleaner package. But I don't want you to stop the hearing. I want you to deliberate, and then, because what Mr. Haas would like is really to know where he stands today and then go back next. We could do conceptual.
Okay. What I think, if there are no more questions from the Commission, I'd like to get Mr. Haas up, get the applicant. He may have some things he wants to tell us, and then we'll proceed from there.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Frank Haas. What I would like to propose to you folks, I did agree with the planning that they redo the conditions, and I do appreciate that they do a good work. The Board is great to me, so I cannot miss, right? We can have a barbecue when that is over. So what I'd like to do, propose to you folks, get the grading permit, including the berm, do all that extra earthwork, rough grading, and get that done. On hydro-sit, the inside of the berm, in case it's the training, we getting the season again, so it does no erosion, gas, erosion control, plaster, plant, retention basin. And outside of the freeway, gotta be hydro-sited, and also wood chips. Different bushes be planned on the outside of the freeway. There is no bushes recommended by the flood control inside for blocking up the water flow. So he, Nick told me, certainly don't put anything inside because I was planning to put wood chips, they all wash down, and then it blocks up the water flow. So there only gonna be hydro-sited inside, and it's gotta be done. In order to get all this grading in a part of the condition done, then when I have the condition, when I have that all grading, then I can put my water system in, I can proceed with it. I need to find the rough grading. So that's why I ask.
Okay, Commissioner Blau?
Mr. Haas, you understand that the way the conditions are going to read, before you can landscape the berm and build the berm, you have to get the BAR's approval. Do you understand that?
Yeah.
You've got to create a landscape plan, you have to submit to the BAR.
Yeah, I will submit.
To the BAR, get their approval before you do that.
Yes. I don't have a problem, because I have to come in front of it anyway. It has to be done properly, that everybody's happy with.
Okay, before you go on, I just want to ask the staff a question. Is it possible to segregate the berm from the track map? I mean, we'd like to see the berm be eight-foot high now, and we'd like to see it landscaped, and whether he ever builds the friggin' tract or not. But I don't, I don't think the conditions read that way now. So I would ask the staff if that's possible to do that.
Ms. Black?
May I have a comment, please?
Well, I would ask this question first, and then we'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Madam Chair and Commissioner Blau, it's possible to do that. It's a little bit, well, there's two problems with it in this particular case, I think. Number one, the berm is located on individual lots and isn't really a classic tract improvement. The second is, the County of Santa Barbara has not really favored the use of berms to screen development, and certainly not before you even know what the development is. So we would essentially be allowing Mr. Haas to construct or heighten a berm when we don't even know what the development is going to be. So I was actually going to recommend that we delete the conditions requiring the berm because they don't come or flow from the mitigated negative declaration. They're not incorporated into the policy discussion at all, and they're simply reflecting an unstated intent in the condition, in the project description of Mr. Haas to construct this berm and leave it up to him and the BAR to work through.
So what is the genesis of the berm? Where did that?
I think the berm was initially incorporated as part of the previous parcel map that was approved. And then I think Mr. Haas has been enthusiastic about increasing the height of the berm. But if you review the documents, it's not included in the project description. It's not included in the ND. Mr. Haas?
May I make a comment? The berm was established for soundproofing, the noise factor. We had, Dr. Mitchell had, investigate how many feet the houses have to be packed from a certain 6 decimal point, and we came in with 50 decimal point, and the certain footage, and the Edford berm came apart at, and I like to also incorporate the berm, also dual function, also retention basin. So it adds the water on one side, and the height of the berm becomes for the sound. So it has to, does make sense, Mr. Blau?
Well, it does, but I have to caution you a little bit, Mr. Haas. When you, from this point forward, you're going to go through the subdivision process or track map process. And in that process, the county... And in that process, the county, through the engineering department and through the building department, are going to review your plans that you're going to construct. The risk you would take is if you go build your berm now and you don't build it the way it needs to be built when you go through the subdivision process, you could end up building it twice. So I think what the staff is trying to tell you is that you may want to wait on building the berm until you get a little farther along in your track map to make sure that we don't build the berm incorrect. It's just things like the retarding basin and everything else, it's going to have to be approved by flood control and by other agencies. And so if you go build that without their approval now, you could end up doing it twice. I hate to see you waste your money. So, I mean, for me, you know, if you wanted to build the berm and you wanted to landscape it and do it, you know, this summer before the rains come and it helps your erosion problem, that probably would be okay, but I just want you to understand you may be at risk in doing it twice if you end up having a different requirement when you go through the track map process.
Very true, I, I'm sorry. Very true that common, only I have flood control's approval for the berm, for the retention basin because we need, you know, the retention basin was built one time under a flood control permit. Now that the flood control comes back and says the water flow is on the wrong side of the berm, I build it twice now. Okay? Okay? First they approved it and now they have a new department heading there and this is now the water has to be an opposite side. You know, establish that, I have to certain grade, I have to protect the water flow because it's zero point five percent flow, so there is no water going, extreme streamline going down into the, underneath the freeway. So 90% of our water gotta be retained and it's engineered already for that berm and everything. I'm sorry, do I miss something?
No, I'm just wanting not to continue a conversation between applicant and Commissioner.
I agree.
I'm sorry.
So I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask our council this question.
I'm sorry.
That's fine, that's council's question.
I'm sorry.
The way we have, the way you intend to reword the grading permit process we talked about?
Yeah.
If Mr. Haas went to flood control and went to engineering to redo his, redo his retention basin and redo his berm, would the language in the current conditions allow it to happen if flood control and the county offered the permit? That's my question.
Mr. Chair, no.
Okay.
The Board of Supervisors has to approve grading prior to recordation and that was the point I was going to make about the berm. Mr. Haas cannot go out and construct this berm today or tomorrow.
Okay.
Unless and until he has approval to do grading prior to construction. It's got to be grading, we won't allow him to go out and grade a site for no purpose. It's got to be associated with something and it's clearly associated with development of this site, so he would need to go to the Board of Supervisors and get approval to do grading prior to recordation.
And that takes what? Is that a difficult requirement? If his engineer prepared a plan and a map and they submitted to the Board for approval, the Board could approve it?
There's standards to do it, to grade prior to recordation. I don't, I haven't looked at those in a while and I can't really comment on how difficult it is.
If long as there's a process, I'm okay.
It's possible. There's a process.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney, you have a question for...
A process, point of order. Madam Chair, I think Mr. Haas was invited to say whatever he wanted with regard to his project and we got off on the berm subject. I really think we need to hear from him.
Right.
I have a lot of comments about the project that I haven't made yet, but I do want to hear from him first. So once we finish those and get on with the whole thing, then we can get back to the Commission.
Okay, that's fine. Good, okay. Mr. Haas, we hear your concerns. Do you have anything else you'd like to share with us regarding your project so that we can move on with our process? Do you have anything else?
Well, you know, I'd like to have it as simple as possible and that's all it is. I don't want to make it more complicated, more costly, okay? Equipment to move in, equipment, it's costly and everything else, only whatever, I have to be flexible at that time of frame for, okay? Because I appreciate what you folks do.
Okay.
And I like to finish it. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I just, is there, I'll open up the public comment portion. Do we have any speaker slips? No, then I'll close that, close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for any further questions or Commissioner Cooney.
Well, Madam Chair, in view of the fact that we're looking at a continuance of this matter to examine the language of certain of the conditions, I think it's appropriate if other concerns that we have might be raised so they can be addressed in the interim. And in reading through the staff report and listening to the presentation today, I have a concern that may be easily answered by Environmental Health Services regarding the proposed individual septic systems that are involved in this project. I didn't see any discussion of that in the negative declaration. There is a letter from Environmental Health Services saying there's percolation, but there is a creek in the vicinity and my understanding was that we were, in order to have individual septic systems, there was quite a process involved and I want to be sure that's being followed here. Secondly, and entirely separately, I'm a little concerned, not with the fact that these properties are being subdivided, but that it appears they will be sold individually and building out of the various parcels would be done over a period of time. And there is a risk that the construction will be erratic in terms of blending in with each other. Now, we've addressed the need to have architectural review, but I don't think we have any limitations otherwise such as one-story homes or height of homes or anything other than the basic county standard. And for me, the driving force here is the visibility of this site from Highway 101. So I hope those issues can be addressed in the discussion we eventually have.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes, thank you. This is in the 3rd District. Again, I'm hoping, and I'm just looking at the negative deck dated March 23rd, where we have the policies and the development standards from the San Inez Community Plan. There's extensive verbiage here about septic systems. It is a big concern in the 3rd District, in San Inez, and I'm just going to assume that they've all been addressed, you know, maybe when we come back on the 7th, you know, to look at this again. I have to say, this is, the project's been a long time in the works. I was kind of surprised when I went to the site to see the, I guess it's, I thought it was some kind of grading, but I think it's my, the mystery has been solved because of some of the work that's been done there because, with the well. And probably the equipment that I saw on that parcel, you know, was as a result of some work that had been done there. But certainly, you know, the parcel has been disturbed. The homes that are there, I don't know then, I can't remember the name of the street now, those are two, they look like one-story homes, actually very beautiful homes, you know, in the parcel or acre before that, the acre lots, but very nicely done, you know, one-story. I'm hoping that when this goes to B A R, you know, this is what we're going to see. This conversation about the berm, I too, as Commissioner Cooney, you know, I do have concerns about the views, you know, from 101. You know, the berm isn't part of the project, I guess, in some sense, but it's going to become important, you know, to, as we say, soften the view from 101 because we don't want to see the homes and I'm sure the homes doesn't, you know, the people living in the homes, they don't want to see or hear, you know, the highway. I have to say, just I want to make this point, I did get off the 101, I was coming from the north on Honado Road exit. And I think there was, in Department of Transportation, had listed, you know, some concerns about these on and off, you know, these, very dangerous, on and offs and the fact that they go across the highway, you know, north of this project. So I don't know if we, we can't tell people how to drive or where to drive, but I really have concern about more traffic, you know, going north of the project and then, you know, getting on 101, especially going to the north. You know, I don't know how you can encourage people to, you know, drive another mile or two to go into, you know, Beelton City and get one-on-one because that is a very dangerous turnoff. Hopefully all this will be resolved at our next meeting and...
Okay. Commissioner Blau.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't...
Oh, you, okay, Ms. Brooks. Black, excuse me.
Madam Chair, I'm not encouraging you to postpone your discussion of these items. I mean, what we'd like to do is to really have the full discussion of the Commission today and come back with conditions that implement it.
Right, but I, but I think what I hear is that there needs to be some more information from Commissioner Cooney and those, we can't certainly discuss that until we have that information, so...
On the septic systems.
On the septic systems, right.
But as far as the aesthetic issues are concerned...
Right.
I would hope we would know where we're going to...
Oh, well, I'm not concluded here yet. I'm, Commissioner Black.
I was just going to comment on the, on the septic systems. I have no concern on it whatsoever. The county has very strict standards, how, where and how you install septic systems. And you have to get in clearance from the environmental health people in order to, both for the design, the location, the depth, I mean, it depends on the, you know, how the ground percolates when you do the perk test and there's different ways to build them based if you're too close to a creek, you can do deep wells, you can do leach lines. I'm not concerned a bit about that. The county knows exactly how to approve a properly designed septic system. We don't need to, as a planning commission, delve into that. That's way beyond our scope of expertise. I just know that they have the expertise to do that. I guess if you need assurance of that, we can get somebody from that department who wishes the actual permits or approves the plans, but from my experience, it's not a problem.
Okay. Okay. I want to make sure that they're following from Ms. Black's lead that we fully address the issue of the B A R architectural review. As far as I'm concerned, I think that should go through architectural review. And then there were some other issues to be worked out, but Commissioner Brooks, you want to...
I, I thought from earlier discussion that everything that is written in here coming from the San Inez Community Plan requires, you know, these different elements to go before.
Right, okay.
So we're, we're okay. I mean, okay.
Okay. So if we're going to continue and yet we need some additional information for, how should we proceed at this point?
Well, Madam Chair, if, the only additional information I've heard so far is on septic.
I believe so.
So is that the only issue that's on the table?
I think, I think that's...
Commissioner Cooney, is that, I think that's your issue.
In terms of additional information, yes.
Right.
And basically, just so I'm clear, it wouldn't take an appearance here by someone from environmental health from, as long as there's contact with our staff and environmental health to be sure that they're following the same redundant systems. I mean, the problem I have with it is that in the Montecito area, the septic systems that are being put in place now require a great deal of space. And so I just want to be satisfied that someone's done the analysis so that we can approve eight lots as opposed to five lots or seven lots based on the ability to meet those standards. So that's what I'm looking for.
Okay. And so there's no other comments from the Commission that would affect...
I don't, I don't hear any unless a Commissioner speaks up concerning any others.
Okay. No, I see none, okay. So, Mr. Karamitso, did you want to speak to that issue?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I might just cite the May 4th letter from Paul Jensen, the Public Health Department. And he does state that sewage disposal is proposed to be provided by onsite wastewater treatment systems.
We've read that.
Okay.
Yeah, we've seen that and I think Commissioner Cooney has some concerns beyond that, so I think, I think staff will need to just go back to Mr. Jensen, we need to get some more information. Okay, Ms. Black, if you would just, so is it just appropriate for us to continue or are you looking for conceptual? Commissioner Brooks, step in here, I'm not sure how you want to proceed.
I get, I think based on, you know, what we need to have for the next meeting, I would make the motion, you know, to continue this item. I think my issues have, again, as long as, you know, everything is abiding by the community plan and I see all the language that, I would, I want to make sure that stays in there. You know, I think some things might say, if feasible or whatever, I think it's very necessary, you know, for the San Inez community that that language remain. Yeah, I just say let's continue and resolve that.
All right, Ms. Black. Okay. Then, Madam Chair, just so we're all, we all share the same expectation, our expectation then would be to come back next week with a revised cleaned-up set of conditions of approval that more clearly track the mitigation measures in the negative declaration and clarify the B A R requirements in a better way and the berming, taking the berming requirements out as requirements, cleaning up the language with respect to grading prior to final tract map approval. And essentially that's it and then we'll bring back some additional information on septic systems.
Okay. So, Commissioner Brooks, if I could just have a motion with that and we'll get a second and then...
Okay, I make the motion then that we continue this item until our next meeting on, I guess, July 7th?
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, fine, okay, then the motion's carries and this will, this item will be continued to our next meeting then. And it'll be the first on the agenda? Okay, great. Thank you and thank you, staff. And thank you, Mr. Haas, and we'll see you next week. Okay, we'll move on to our last item, item number four. And Mr. Eadie, if you would, Mr. Rodriguez, read that into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Following is the hearing on the request of the Planning and Development Department to consider case number 10, GPA 1, proposing to, one, amend the Santa Barbara County Comprehensive Plan through adoption of the proposed updates to the seismic safety and safety element, land use element and conservation element, and, two, accept the final seismic safety and safety element, land use element and conservation element update negative declaration 10, NGD 10, as adequate environmental review for case number 10, GPA 1 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of CEQA.
Okay, great, thank you. And Mr. Eadie.
Thank you, Chair and fellow Commissioners. Hope you're having a wonderful afternoon and we'll move forward with the next project. As previously mentioned, we're proposing amendments to three elements of our general plan. I think it's important to note at this point in time that the vast bulk of the project are changes to the safety element, the changes to the land use and the conservation element are minor in retrospect. To give a brief overview of the staff recommendation, I think this is an important time to note that this is a general plan amendment, all such actions have to receive final approval by the Board. So staff's request today is just that the Commission make a recommendation to the Board, not take a final action. That being said, staff would request that the Commission recommend to the Board that they adopt the required findings, including CEQA findings, accept the negative declaration, adopt a resolution approving staff-specified amendments to the three elements, the seismic safety and safety element, the land use element, and the conservation element. And lastly, and this is a specific requirement of state law, that the Board adopt a resolution confirming that our Board of Supervisors has considered the recommendations made by the State Board of Forestry and Fire Protection. Due to the complexity of the project, we've broken the presentation down into five categories. So first, we'll start with a brief discussion of what are the benefits of going forward with this project and then we'll provide some background information about the legislation that was the driving force behind this update. We'll move on to the specific amendments that are proposed for each individual element. We'll give you an overview of the regulatory review process that was conducted as part of this project and finally we'll conclude with some summary of the environmental analysis. So in terms of the benefits of the project, first and foremost, the safety element will have a new structure of goals and policies that will primarily help our planners to protect future development from natural hazards. This will also be a great information source for the public. Another significant portion of the project is to adopt the county's existing hazard mitigation plan as an addendum to the safety element. And I'll go into more detail about this, but this is primarily... this is primarily going to have some funding benefits for the county. And lastly, a great effort that staff has made is to remove some outdated information and maps, and replace those with a reference process that I think is going to be better in terms of, we'll have an element that virtually self-updates itself, so we will no longer have these static maps that are updated on a regular basis by state and federal agencies, and then those updated maps never make it into our general plan. So, this will be a new process by which we avoid that. So, as background for the project, and just to set the stage for the county's unique general plan, we have 13 adopted elements, seven of those are explicitly required by the state, the safety element being one of them. We also have a coastal land use plan, and then the county has taken upon themselves to adopt five optional elements which aren't explicitly required by law. The safety element specifically was adopted in 1979 and has largely remained untouched since then. There were some minor text amendments in 1983 and 1991, and we also adopted a safety supplement that addressed hazard materials in 2000. This particular project was really initiated by the passage of state law, being Assembly Bill 162, and following on that, we decided to add a new standard set of policies to address the three major hazard areas that are currently discussed in the safety element, which are flood, fire, and geologic. As previously mentioned, we'll also be proposing that the hazard mitigation plan be added, and as a minor component of the project that goes beyond the scope of AB 162, we're also recommending some minor changes to the mining discussion in the conservation element, and I will provide more detail. So, in terms of Assembly Bill 162, it was signed into law in 2007. The law primarily concentrates on local jurisdictions providing specific information regarding flood hazards, and some additional information about groundwater recharge and storm water management. So, that was the catalyst for the project, but staff obviously felt that it was important that if we were going to establish goals and policies for flood, that we would also extend that update to fire protection and geologic hazard, which are significant issues in this county as well. So, we didn't want to address just one hazard area, we really wanted comprehensively address all hazards that the county faces. So, in the safety element, as mentioned, we've added these new policies and implementation measures. We've also significantly updated the background narrative that discusses fire activity in the county. We've replaced outdated print maps with references to where the new digital replacements can be found, and we're also, again, recommending adoption of the hazard mitigation plan. So, here's a great example of what these actual new goals and policy structure will consist of. So, in your top line, these blue boxes in the flow chart represent what new information we're planning to add, and this is just one specific example. So, we've added a new goal, which is protect the community from wildland and urban fires. That is supported by a policy that the county should continue to promote fire prevention programs and control measures, and finally, that's enacted by an implementation measure that says the county shall continue to maintain and enforce its County Code, Chapter 10, which are the building regulations. Now, the part of the process that already exists today, and how we actually address these hazards already, would be that we already have special components of our building regulations that specifically require fire-resistant materials and building techniques in high-fire hazard areas. So, typical examples include Class A roofing, one-hour fire-rated material, heavy timber construction, and those are already required in the project design during the plan check process and are being developed on sites today. So, really, what we're doing is backfilling the policy and the goal structure to support the actions that the county has already been undertaking. As an example of the process that we've undertaken to create a self-updating set of maps, and so, here's an example of our current tsunami inundation map for the county. It exists in eight-and-a-half-by-eleven print form in the current element, it's county-wide, and it provides just a general hatching of tsunami inundation areas. It's extremely difficult for planners or even the public to reference this map and create, you know, some specificity in terms of what areas of the county are affected. So, we're proposing to replace that map instead with a verbal statement that tells the public and the planner clearly what agency is in charge of updating these maps and making this accessible to the public. So, in this instance, for tsunami inundation maps, it's the California Geological Survey. Now, we are also, we are not going to provide the link because that is another thing that changes often. So, we simply point you to the agency, and you can always come to either Planning and Development for access to the map, or the countywide GIS system that's available, known as the My Property. You can actually look up your own parcel if you're a property owner, and it'll give you much of this information. That being said, if you go to the California Geological Survey's website, here they break down the entire state by county. You select the county that you're in, and it's going to give you quadrants that are, in this case, affected by tsunami. And for illustrative purposes, today I've chosen Santa Barbara South Coast. You can see the specificity that it provides that literally follows the contour, provides a block-by-block reference. There's even, when you view this on your own computer, you can see major county landmarks such as the courthouse. So, the specificity that's provided far exceeds what we have available in our element today. So, here's a comparison of, in the foreground, you have what our current map gives you, which again is that just general hatching process, a few major streets as references, but little more than that, and if you compare it in the background to what is available today via the digital media, you can see that the improvement is vast. So, the final component of the project is to basically adopt our existing hazard mitigation plan as an addendum to the safety element. And this dates back to, all local jurisdictions were required to adopt a hazard mitigation plan pursuant to a Federal Disaster Mitigation Act, and the county adopted ours in 2005, but when we did so, it was adopted as a standalone document. And later, as Assembly Bill 2140 in 2006, the state effectively put a funding cap of 75% reimbursement for jurisdictions which do not have a hazard mitigation plan directly adopted as part of their safety element. So, in effect, what it did was, because we had a mitigation plan, but it's not part of our safety element, if we have a disaster such as a large wildfire, the state will only reimburse us up to 75%, and they cannot legally exceed that. Now, if we take the recommended action, which is to adopt the hazard mitigation plan, which already exists, just formally adopt as part of the safety plan, then the state is able to reimburse us 100%. So, if you think of this in terms of some of our disaster response to wildfires have exceeded 20 million, you know, 25% of that is a substantial amount of money. Moving on to the minor changes we made to the land use element, these were primarily predicated by the changes we made for the safety element. There was flood hazard policy discussion in the land use element, and we wanted these two to be consistent with one another. So, the changes to the land use element was just to ensure that our reference to the new flood hazards, maps, and resources, that they were all internally consistent amongst all elements of the general plan. Lastly, our proposed changes to the conservation element. So, the first change was directly required by AB 162, and this was that we inserted a map to illustrate areas where groundwater recharge can be achieved within the county. So, the map to your right will be embedded within the conservation element. It illustrates Blue Line Creeks, existing reservoirs, areas where there is an elevated opportunity for groundwater recharge. The second revision that staff proposes to the conservation element is to address mineral extraction recommendations that have existed in the element since it was adopted in 1979. And the recommendation, this was never a policy, basically directly tied CEQA impact levels to policy in terms of whether or not the county should approve a mine. In other words, if there were significant impacts that result from a mine, then that alone should be a reason not to approve the project. And this doesn't comport with the standing practice of our policy recommendations and our environmental review are two separate processes and shouldn't be directly tied to one another. So, we're simply proposing a change to this recommendation that is more in line with accepted county process and CEQA guidelines. Moving on to the regulatory review that was undertaken as part of this project, the county put together a technical advisory committee. These were representatives of all the major county departments and agencies that typically respond to natural hazards or try and mitigate the effects of them. So, we had representatives from the county's fire department, flood control, Office of Emergency Services, and each one of these TAC members reviewed the proposed changes on a monthly basis as we developed these updates to the safety element. As of December 2009, they gave final approval that all changes met with department standards, and we released the proposed amendments for state review in January of 2010. In conjunction with this, we sent the element to all local fire agencies, so this is every agency that provides fire protection within the county. So, all cities, the Forest Service, anyone who provides fire protection, including Vandenberg. They all received it, they all reviewed it, and no one provided substantive comments. The first of the two state agencies that have reviewed the safety element would be the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection. They were given 60 days, and they responded with a standard set of 48 recommendations. They give these recommendations to all local jurisdictions, so they were not uniquely tailored to the county. Ultimately, the county staff has considered this, these recommendations. We found that 22 of the recommendations are already being implemented in the county today, and so, we don't need to take any action. 25 of the recommendations will be fully or partially putting into place as part of this update to the safety element, and ultimately, there's one recommendation that we will not be undertaking due to limited county resources. We also, we do have to have substantial evidence to do this, and we have found that the Bay Area Air Quality Management District has adopted thresholds, and because there's substantial evidence that the demographics and the conditions of our county are similar enough to their jurisdictions, that we can successfully use their thresholds on an interim basis until we've reviewed and approved our own thresholds. In the context of this project, these are simple policy-level decisions on how to deal with natural hazards, and therefore, there's going to be no direct result in an increase in greenhouse gas emissions. So, just to review staff's recommendation again, this is that the planning commission recommend that the board adopt the required findings, accept the negative declaration, approve the resolution for the specified amendments to the three elements, and adopt a resolution confirming that our board has reviewed the recommendations made by the State Board of Forestry and Fire Protection. So, that concludes my presentation, but I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Brown. I spent, well, I was going to just kind of give this a surface reading, and all of a sudden, I realized, I think I'm reading a history of the county, which I found actually very interesting. So, after about two hours of reading last night, and I will continue to plow through this, the one thing I was concerned about, I live in an area that doesn't have an updated community plan, and right now, there's, you know, the funding is not there. And then, when I went to the Board of Forestry letter, and then in the back, the chart, which shows, you know, what were their suggestions for implementation and where we are in the county, the one particular one, which you just mentioned a bit ago, where the county is not implementing due to financial considerations, I do have a concern about that because it says that the county will continue to assess the condition of the building stock and corresponding vulnerability to fire hazards on the community-specific basis as part of a community plan process. But if we don't have that, and it's not going to be done because of, let's say, financial constraints, how does that make me feel, because I do live next to a high-fire area? So, could you explain how we can say we're not going to do that, if it is a recommendation, and if there's not going to be a community plan in the near future? How does, let's say, that unincorporated area deal with that?
Certainly. Chair Brown and Commissioner Brooks. So, to give the entire commission some background on this issue, there is one recommendation that staff has recommended that we not implement, and this came from the State Board of Forestry and Fire, and this was basically that we systematically assess the condition of all structures in the county for their vulnerability to fire. And while that is a noble goal, the county has, on the scale of 50,000 residences alone, that's not including commercial or industrial or agricultural structures, so the staff resources involved in that process, combined with other issues, like not all of those structures are accessible from, you know, public roads, the county would have to get permission from each property owner to go and assess the structures, it simply isn't feasible at this time. Now, the suggestion that we continue to deal with this situation in the context of a community plan isn't an attempt to suggest that that is a way to successfully implement this recommendation. That's why we're saying we're not implementing this recommendation. If the community plans was a comprehensive way of following through on this request from the board, we would have said, that's how we're implementing it. We simply were suggesting that the community plan process for specific communities like Mission Canyon can help provide some sort of segue between what the Board of Fire is asking for and what we, as the county, can provide. In reality, our most comprehensive way of dealing with this issue, which is how fire-resistant are individual structures, it's in the plan check process. We can't require individuals to go back and retrofit structures which were permitted in the past with fire-resistant requirements. What we can do is, going forward, make any new construction comply with that. And in the meantime, the county's primary way of dealing with protecting pre-existing structures which were built prior to these fires, as to building codes, is to require vegetation clearance, to encourage prescribed burning, which basically aren't an attempt to keep the fire away from the structure rather than retrofitting the structure itself. And that seems to be the best means in the county's ability right now to address that issue.
I'm looking at 3.2. It says, "The identification and actions for substandard fire safety housing." Okay, I can see that's individual structure, but it also says, "and neighborhoods relative to fire hazard area." Now, I know I live next to a high-fire hazard area. What, do we have enough in place, let's say, to satisfy what the Board of Forestry is commenting on here? I'm assuming we do. You know, we have, you know, you have to clear your, the brush, and yet, sometimes, I don't see, you know, an active enforcement of that. If we were doing this, would there be a more active enforcement?
Chair Brown and Commissioner Brooks, I think at this point in time, the fire, excuse me, the county has taken every action that we feasibly can, just giving the limited resources. It's interesting to note that we are the local agency for CAL FIRE, so we, in effect, have contracted with them to provide fire protection services directly here rather than the state providing those services within the county. Because of that, we worked with CAL FIRE in concert to develop the latest fire severity maps. Like I said, those are available to every property owner via our public GIS system. So, you, as a property owner, if you're concerned about your vulnerability or your neighborhood's vulnerability, you can go and check those maps online. But ultimately, our existing plan check process and our fire department's ability to encourage, if not outright require, property owners to clear vegetation is the biggest effort that we can make right now.
My final comment on this, it just seems like we, in fact, do this in the county, and not on individual structures or houses, but, you know, as far as neighborhoods. So, to say we're not implementing it, it seems to me, for neighborhood points, yes, we are implementing it. So, I don't.
Chair Brown and Commissioner Brooks, and staff can review that and see if the recommendation maybe needs to be massaged or re-characterized it. I think the thing that made staff feel most uncomfortable was just the assertion that it should be on a structure-specific level. So, there are instances where, in other recommendations, we've said, well, we will be partially implementing it, so maybe this is an argument that we are partially implementing it on a neighborhood basis. Really, this is somewhat at the detriment of the state issuing these universal recommendations to all jurisdictions. For a smaller jurisdiction, for instance, a small city like Bulton or Solvang, doing these structure-specific assessments might actually be feasible. But for the county, due to just our rural nature and the quantity of structures we have, you know, that structure-specific assessment would just be a serious drain on our resources.
Commissioner Cooney?
Mr. Eadie, in reviewing the fire sections, which are Ms. Ede, in reviewing the fire sections, which are important to me, living in a high-fire hazard area, it appears the approach of the element is to address construction and development in high-fire hazard areas with construction standards, that is, use of certain materials, access to the structures, and clearing, as you said. But basically, and I think this is in answer to those who have responded after each fire, why does the county keep letting people build in those areas? Nothing in this element precludes development in high-fire or even severely high-fire hazard areas. We know there are going to be wildfires, yet we don't, Planning and Development doesn't have the option of saying, "You just can't develop because of the fire danger unless you do it in accordance with these standards." Am I right about that?
Chair Brown and Commissioner Cooney, I would say that your assessment is fairly accurate, and I think the best way for staff to respond to that is that this update to the safety element is not going to address all of these programmatic issues. This was specifically intended to address the requirements of state law that we have to address right now. Staff's best recommendation is that if we, as a county, want to consider a new programmatic way of addressing the ties between land use and vulnerability to natural hazards like fire, that needs to be done and update to, if not just the safety element, most likely the entire general plan, because that would most likely result in a significant rezoning of large portions of the land, which, you know, we would need a significantly update the land use element as part of that. And it's not that that's an issue that shouldn't be looked at and given its due time, but that is why long-range planning has continued to impress upon the board the need to provide an update of the entire general plan, and those are issues that could be addressed in that context. And there has been some progress on that front in terms of, for the long-range planning's work plan, we kind of have long-term goals, medium-term goals, short-term goals, and the update to the entire general plan has recently been moved from the long term to the medium term. So we've seen some progress as far as that being hopefully on the horizon.
And what does medium term mean? Five years, ten years?
Chair Brown, short term is, we do it in the next fiscal year. So short-term projects are, it's literally under consideration for doing within the next fiscal year, so medium-term projects, I would say, float more in the one-to-five-year range.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you. S. Ede, when I got this document, I think Saturday, and so I've had three days to look at it, and I want to tell you that I didn't even come close to giving a perusal, but I did go page through a lot of things, and one thing, one page that I did stop at is where you're doing the introductions of the cities, pardon me, and the city of Long Oak is the third largest in the county, and it received six lines, seven, eight lines of description in your document, and I thought, maybe a few more for the third-largest city. Secondly, the population, I guess you have population numbers from years and years ago, because our population is close to forty-four thousand now, so I thought maybe, you know, a little update there, and I thought if our population was that, then the other populations were probably off a little. Like Santa Maria, you had a population of seventy-seven thousand, well, it's in excess of ninety thousand now, and so those things need to be updated. That's all I had. But a document of this nature to be truly reviewed in form probably takes a couple of months, you know, because there is a lot of reading to do in there. There's interesting reading to read about the histories, Commissioner indicated before, but it certainly didn't get the review you wanted, but it got a quick look, and that's, I'm sure the comments reflect that. Thank you.
Mr. Ede, you know, this is quite a bureaucratic exercise to have gone through what you've gone through, and there's a lot of good meaty stuff in there, and I'm not sure if there's much public interest in this, or maybe there should be, but just thinking about some of the things you said about how you're going to tie the information with the state to maps in here. So I presume that a hard copied document, once these are updated, a hard copied document will be published with that line of information you had. So there won't be any basic maps, maps will all just be based from some other, from some other agency, is that kind of what's going to?
Chair Brown, that's partially right. So as part of this update process, you will see the vast majority of maps that deal with any fire-related hazard and any flood-related hazard will be removed. The ones for geologic hazards will remain for the time being. That is a portion of the element, which will still need some significant updating. Again, that's another thing that staff would propose, would be good to look at in terms of if we update the entire general plan. That being said, yes, the reality is, is that paper maps as part of the general plan become outdated far too quickly, and they just simply can't provide the parcel-vice-farcel specificity that county staff already has as part of our GIS systems. And that's really what we're going to use to do that evaluation, and so therefore, that's really what should be presented to the public. And if we did that in the form of the general plan, we, quite honestly, with the restrictions of state law, that you only update your general plan four times a year, probably could not update it often enough to keep those maps as updated as they are by the state and federal agencies.
So I can eventually see that your hard copy will always be out of date, but your online copy will always be up to date with maps and that kind of information that's provided by other agencies.
Chair Brown, that's the general idea, is that we will not provide maps in the safety element specifically so that we do not provide the public with outdated information. And really, you'll see a continued development of the county's public GIS system. It's already available to the public today, very user-friendly, type in your APN number, and you already have access to these fire severity maps and the tsunami inundation maps.
Great, okay. Any other questions? If not, Vice Chair, I wonder if I can get you to do the motion in the very first, in the staff report.
Madam Chair, thank you for that great honor.
You're so gracious, and it's right there on the second page.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we adopt the required findings for the project specified in Attachment A of the staff report, including the SEQA findings, and that we adopt the final negative declaration, ten NG, zero string ten, included as Attachment B, and three, that we adopt a resolution that includes as Attachment C, approving specific amendments to the seismic and safety and safety element, included as Attachment A of the, of Attachment C, and the land use element included as Exhibit B of Attachment C, and the conservation element included as Attachment C. Exhibit C is Attachment C of the Santa Barbara Comprehensive Plan, and that we adopt the resolution included as Attachment D, confirming that the board has considered the recommendations made by the State Board of Forestry and Fire Protection and Correspondence dated March third, two thousand and ten, included as Attachment E, and an implement of recommendations for appropriate, following the board action, the county will submit its response to the State Board of Forestry and Fire Protection, included as Attachment A of Attachment D. Exhibit A of Attachment D.
And I'll second that, assuming that you meant to make a recommendation to the board to approve this. I think you wanted to approve the document, so I hear recommendation of the board, right?
Right, written to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, so I'll second it, thanks.
Great. Is there any discussion? No, I failed to take any public comment, I don't see we have any slips, so open and close a public comment period, and we have a motion and a second, and all those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion's carried, and there we have a good day. Thank you all, and thank you to your staff. Ms. Black, it's a good day, you got a lot done today, and we'll see, yeah, we did. And we'll see everybody next week. Happy Fourth of July to all, and we will be in Santa Barbara next week. Thank you.